Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our December 15th Council Conference Agenda. Madam Clerk, would you kindly please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Kropoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Mayor Perici?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to my colleagues, and thank you for everyone being here tonight as we come into the Christmas season and to a brand-new year. It's always exciting, this part of our council meetings, when we honor the youth of West Orange, and that we're so very, very proud of them. The excitement and the honor and the prestige that they bring to the township, and the efforts on behalf of their parents to allow them to do that. And as I'd like, which I'd like as always being on the council, is to make awards to our youth athletes of the Township of West Orange. And tonight, we're giving a team award to the West Orange Pal Mustangs, the 2015 HCYFL Champions. So... So, what I'd like to do is, I'm gonna walk over to the podium, and I'd like Anthony Castellino to come up and help me. Thank you, Anthony, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And then you can introduce the coaches, have them come up, and they have the privilege of, I'm sorry, handing out all these... There is a certificate for each one of the players. It's something that you can keep, and something to be very, very proud of, as we're proud of you. Okay. Okay. Citation of the West Orange Township Council, recognizing the 2015 West Orange Pal Mustangs. The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the 2015 West Orange Pal Mustangs. I'm not gonna read all the names, we'll let the coaches ring all the names, but I just wanna acknowledge each and every one of you should be very proud. The township is very proud of you, and remember, you always have a friend here with the administration and the Township Council. So, go Mustangs! The West Orange Pal Mustangs won all eight of the regular-season games. They remain undefeated in the playoffs when they beat Hoboken with a score of 19-0. They went on to win the 2015 Hudson County Youth Football League Middleweight Championship, defeating North Bergen with a score of 27-0. Love those scores. And now, it's my honor and my privilege that the Township Council, the Township of West Orange congratulates the team on their excellent sportsmanship, and wishes them all continued success in their future, in both their lives professionally and personally. Congratulations, Mustangs! And now, I'll have, you know, Mr. Castellino bring up the coaches, hand out the awards. Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Town Council, and the administration. We appreciate you having us down here for this recognition tonight. This team worked very hard to accomplish those goals that Councilman Guarino just mentioned, and that doesn't come easily. You know, that comes from hard work, dedication, and commitment. This team, we knew we had something special this year with this group. A large portion of this group was in this room a couple of years ago for recognition, also well-deserved, which came from hard work and dedication as well. So, this team was a special group, and all of their accomplishments on the football field don't talk about what great young men they are as well. This is a terrific group of young men who came together, worked hard, both on the practice field and on the game field, for that success, to go 10-0. And they only let up 38 points this year. It's not quite the 1977 Mustangs that didn't let up any points, but it's something to work for. And, but they did a great job this year, and we're very proud of them as administration at the PAL. I was fortunate enough to coach quite a few of those young men when I was on the field, and I can speak from personal experience what a great job they did. And that doesn't come easily as well. I'd like to introduce the head coach of that team, who instilled that hard work and dedication, Joe De Pasqual.
I would be remiss, but I'd like to recognize Mayor Robert Perici. He'd like to say a few words.
I don't wanna interrupt the coach, Jerry. I just, um... Jack and I were just whispering here. I know that the, to these kids in this room, Jack and I look really old. But I was actually on that '77 championship team, and Jack won a championship, uh, won a championship even earlier than that, I won't tell you what that was. But besides being very proud of what you accomplished this year, you should be proud of being part of a very proud and longstanding tradition that the Mustangs and the West Orange PAL have in this town, and we congratulate you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Council President. Like Coach Tony said, this team is what you think of as a team. They really embraced the team, you know, the team spirit. Great group of kids. That's pretty much it. We're gonna announce the names now, with the certificates. Andrew Mazzarri, Coach Dom, those are my assistants. Come on up here, help me out. Jordan Reneso, Dorian Rawls, Colton Lur, Mackay Green, Austin Cowley, Shakai Carson, TJ Webb, Xander Lipsy, Kelvin Quick, Justin Barr. Devine Zaire. Mason Luciano. Adam Ashby. Chris Modesty. Chumuzay Nudellem. Cotton Nichols. Matt Ove. Ty Kelly. Jermaine James.
Keep going, keep going, you guys got a big team, right? Keep going.
Jordan Keles. Anthony Chapman.
Stand in the back, second row. All guys in the back row.
Gavin Rembert. Joshua Fileman.
Yep, you're tall guy.
Adrian Charles. Sean Tandy. Chris Parsons. Noah Martin. Ian Alcantara. Elijah Matos. Josiah Dunbar. Tyree Ware. Jason Rains.
All guys in the back.
Jason Pierre Lewis. Jason Gonzalez. Jason Dort. And Justin Soto.
All guys in the back row. Oh, I called. We got more.
One more, last but not least.
I forgot the mic in front of me. Sean, Sean, I didn't recognize him. Big Sean. Squeeze in, squeeze in, you're seen. All guys in the back row. Guys, come up too. Hold on, hold on. Wait, where's Sean? They shot. Don't have a smile, lose. I'm thinking it's okay, Jerry. This side's gotta go this way a little more. Okay, we gotta go, we gotta squeeze in, everybody. Tighten up, let's go! Are we in? Tighten up, or everybody's gonna have to push up. Yeah! We'll do as many as you can, Jack.
Yeah! Not anymore.
Really? Everybody got it? Take your time. Congratulations! Congratulations! Okay, guys, congratulations, everyone have a good, happy Christmas, enjoy it. Enjoy, we're very proud of you, the township's very proud of you. Thank you for coming, Jerry. Good job. Good job, guys. Have a good holiday, keep playing, keep working. Yeah, I'm done. Hit them hard, hit them hard, get out of the way. Cheer, we have another season. Do we have another, do you have a... Do we have another, do you have a...
No.
That was a great, exciting thing to do. It's one of my favorite, I know my fellow colleagues on the Township Council, we love recognizing our youth athletes of the Township of West Orange. So, hope for the next year, you know, the 2016 Mustangs come back with another championship. We'd love to do that again. Moving right along on our conference agenda, I now would like to ask the West Orange Public Library Director, Dave Cubey, to come up and make his updates. Good evening, Mr. Director, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, sir.
Good, how are you? Mr. Council President.
Hi, Dave. How you doing? Behind the podium. You can turn the mic to the right.
Speaking to the mic.
Okay. I just wanted to give everyone an update on some of the things that we've got coming up at the library. Right now, we're wrapping up our strategic plan that we've been working on for the last several months. We have, the Chamber of Commerce had a meeting at the library, which was great. I forgot to hand out a Pathfinder of business resources for the business community. Pathfinder is a, is a list of resources and different topics that we keep, that we have on health and on business resources, different things like that that we're working on. We have, we have, we've moved our display case to where you come in on the Mount Pleasant side, and the first display in the display case's new location will be a winner of one of the categories of the Essex County Gingerbread House Competition, done by Miss Gana Gabariasis, and I hope I didn't mispronounce that, but she's gonna have her gingerbread house on display in the library, so that's very exciting. Tomorrow night, our teens are going to be having a, a game night with a Star Wars epis... with a Star Wars-themed games tomorrow night, happening in the library, and that is for grades 6 to 12, and that will be from 7:00 to 8:30 PM in the library. We've got a variety of winter youth programs coming up. We've got a, this is going to be for adults and for, family-themed, for Black History Month coming up in February, will be George Washington Carver and Friends by the Bright Star Touring Theater, well, that will be February 12th at 4:00 PM. These are just some highlights, all of this stuff can be found. I've got flyers here, if anyone would like to see them, you can pick them up at the library, you can get them from me, or you can go to our website, www.wopl.org. This Sunday, we've got our Art on Film series continues, which we do with the West Orange Film Society and West Orange Arts Council. This will be the film Basquiat, and Arts Educator Gerard Am Salem will be, will be doing the screening and having a discussion of painter Julian Schnabel's 1996 biopic on the film Basquiat. As well, we've got adult coloring this Saturday from December 19th, 10 to 12, as one of our free workshops for adults with the West Orange Arts Council. Of course, everything at the library is free. Saturday, February 20th, there'll be another workshop on Make Your Own Book, and all of this stuff came from grants that we applied for and received. So, and that's pretty much the update. We've just got many things going on, as usual, at the library, more things than I can actually tell you about, storytimes, children's events. We've got, will be participating in the Makers' Day on March 19th, so that's a statewide thing, and the library participates in that. So, and that is STEM and STEAM programs, so, just a lot of good things happening at the library, as usual.
Dave, thank you very much. Thank you for the great job you've been doing at the library, and making it even more of a great place and an asset for the township. And also, I want to thank you, you helped out with the Council PTAs in their county meeting at the last minute, so it goes to show you've always been there for our organizations, and I thank you for that.
Well, you're welcome. That's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, everybody.
You too.
Thank you. What's that?
It's the handouts.
Oh, I can leave the handout, please. Can I believe the stack of the handouts up here?
Thank you. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, would you move the, to the next portion, is the nomination of our Council President for the year 2016?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say one more thing, it was my notes stuck in here, is I also wanted to, we, one of our volunteers, library volunteers and regular library users, and I know you guys are gonna be doing a program specifically for him, but from the library, I'd like to congratulate Mahishan, and I apologize for butchering the name, Gananas Saharan, who was one student selected from each state to participate in the U.S. Senate Youth Program, and so from the West Orange Public Library, we'd like to say congratulations.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Dave, thank you very much. Before we move on to nominate, I just wanna say one thing and make an announcement to the residents and to the people in the council chambers tonight. I think we should all take a moment of silence for the recent passing of the father of our Deputy Mayor, Rodolfo Rodriguez. We send out our love, our affection, our support for their loss at this time of the year, so I wish to take a moment of silence to honor, to his memory and to the family. Madam Clerk, I'd like to move on to the nomination for President of the West Orange Township Council.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, if I may, just to go on, I just want, just briefly, and I'll say it again later, that it has been a privilege and an honor to serve with my colleagues here, and to serve the residents of West Orange as your Township Council President. We've accomplished many things in this past year, we've seen some great things happening, we're moving the township forward, but from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank my colleagues for the trust they put in me, the support they've given me, and I believe we did some great things, and I'll talk about that more later, but I just wanted to say that, Madam Clerk, before we move on. So, right now, I'd like to open the council floor to nominations for Council President. Are there any nominations? Yes, Councilman Kropoviac?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to nominate myself for the council presidency. I've served on the council for six years, I'm the longest-serving, a council person who has not been council president, and I believe I could, I could do a good job.
Is there a second?
I'll second the nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, oh, yes, Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate with honor the name of Councilman Victor Cirillo.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Councilwoman Castellino, who would you be voting for?
Mr. Cirillo.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
I'll vote for myself.
Councilman Kropoviac?
I'll vote for myself.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Victor Cirillo.
Council President Guarino?
Victor Cirillo.
Okay. Victor Cirillo will be the council president for 2016.
Congratulations.
At this time, Councilman Cirillo is gonna be making a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I thank you colleagues for, for your vote, we really appreciate that trust. Um, let me put these cards over here, and make a special presentation to our outgoing council president. I have a little, a little plaque on behalf of my colleagues and myself, the town. Gonna ask our council president to come up at this time. Madam Clerk, on behalf of my colleagues, I would like to thank Councilman Guarino for his leadership this past year. Jerry has always been like a devoted resident of the community, and one thing that always sticks out is he's a very positive person, like no matter what the situation, Jerry always sees the positive in things, the positive in issues, and always, you know, helping, helping us to move the community forward. I asked him earlier this afternoon what his, what his biggest accomplishment, he, in his mind, would be, and what, you know, what he thinks is, is a goal that he put out for himself and he accomplished, and that's, and what he told me was, and I agreed, because that's what I had on my notes from this morning, which is the creation of the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee. It's a group of professionals and residents that have come together and are seeking to improve safety in the walkways of West Orange. It's a terrific concept, a terrific idea, and an absolute necessity. So, you've been working with one of, with Roz Moskowitz, and, you know, any, any help that we can provide, you know, we're here for you. Another, another accomplishment that I think should be highlighted is his work with the Downtown West Orange Alliance, through the leadership of Megan Brill and the rest of the board members. Through social media, I'm starting to see an increase in traffic, a lot of, a lot more patronizing of the downtown businesses, and that's really, that was really the key, getting everyone energized about what we have to offer in our downtowns and valley corridor. And Jerry has been there all along, this whole year, and during his, during the years prior to his council presidency, championing that cause. So, we really, really appreciate that part of your service. But you know what, most importantly, you had, you have helped us come together as best as we could, and address policy issues as a group and as a whole, working, working as a team, and we really, really appreciate, and the beneficiaries are the, the members of the public out there, the taxpayers, homeowners, and all that, that we represent. Your wife, Jerry, your wife, Robin, your son, Brett, your daughter, Mallory, should be really proud of your public service. You're doing good work representing them. So, today, on behalf of my council colleagues, we wanna make this special presentation, we have this special plaque. Council, Council President, the plaque reads, "Presented to Jerry Guarino, Council President, January 1st, 2015 to December 31st, 2015," so you're not done yet.
No.
"In appreciation for your dedicated service and commitment to the Township of West Orange in your leadership role as Council President." Thank you very much for your service, Jerry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Something, thank you.
The box is right over there.
Okay. Then I, I guess I'd like to say, Victor, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for your support.
Let me get out of your way.
No, you're not out of my way, you're my colleague. I just quickly would like to say, this is a very humbling experience, and you all know me, I'm an emotional person, but I'd just like to thank my colleagues again. It's been an education, it's been an honor and a privilege to be a public servant to the residents of the Township of West Orange. I'd like to thank the administration, the mayor, and all my council colleagues for the support and what we've done to move West Orange forward, and also to my, my, my family on the Downtown Alliance, Megan Brill, John McElroy, you know, Kevin, you know, we just all came together, we've accomplished a lot of things, the pedestrian safety, you know, board, through that ordinance, we were able to get a grant that enabled Rutgers University's, the School of Government, at the Blaustein School of Government, which tonight, we, we were missing the presentation, because we couldn't make a change, and they couldn't make a change, but at the next meeting, Professor Charles Brown will be making a presentation to the council on the new complete streets of West Orange, and combining it with the safety goals and pedestrian safety goals of the Township of West Orange. So, to make it short, I know we have a long day, I, again, I want to thank my colleagues. This year went by so fast, I had such a great time, and it was a great time, and I'm gonna be here, and I'm always here for the residents of West Orange, and I just want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart. This is very humbling to me, and my family appreciates it, I know my wife, my son Brett, my daughter Mallory, all thank you too for allowing me to serve, so thank you, and Merry Christmas, I hope everyone had a good Hanukkah, a great New Year, and a great Kwanzaa season coming up. Thank you. Sure. Sure.
Can you gather behind the...
Should I get back up there, we take a picture?
Back over here, please, for a picture.
I'd like to take a picture.
You can put the picture on your wall.
Absolutely.
Are you taking pictures? With everybody? Did I do a great picture?
Check, put this down, hold this there. Thank you, my colleagues.
Thank you. Where's the box? Terry, what is it? Isn't that beautiful?
Why don't you go by?
Isn't it gorgeous?
Thank you, my colleagues. Thank you. Thank you.
Where's the box? Terry, what is it? Isn't that beautiful? Thank you. Why don't you go by?
Isn't it gorgeous?
Thank you, my colleagues.
That goes, that goes in the coat.
Thank you, my colleagues, and thank you to the residents of West Orange, again.
Moving right along, Madam Clerk, I think now to the different council liaison positions, please.
Yes.
We have Planning Board, which is Susan McCartney. Susan, you will take that again?
I would, yes.
Okay. The Local Assistance Board, Michelle, you take that again?
Sure.
Okay. Degnan House, Victor?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, of course, Rent a House is currently mine, I'd like to take that again. The Downtown West Orange Alliance, I'd like to serve there again. West Orange Municipal Alliance Committee, Michelle, will you take that again?
Yes.
Okay. That goes, that goes in a collection. Thank you, my colleagues. Thank you, my colleagues, and thank you to the residents of West Orange, again. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, I think now to the different council liaison positions, please.
Yes.
We have Planning Board, which is Susan McCartney. Susan, you will take that again.
I would, yes.
Okay. The Local Assistance Board, Michelle, you take that again.
Sure.
Okay. Degnan House, Victor?
Yes.
Okay. Of course, Rent a House is currently mine. I'd like to take that again. The Downtown West Orange Alliance, I'd like to serve there again. West Orange Municipal Alliance Committee, Michelle, will you take that again?
Yes.
Okay. West Orange Arts Council, Susan?
Yes.
Okay. Open Space Recreation, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. And Public Recreation Commission, which is a new position, and I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Michelle Castellino to fill that spot.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, Madam Clerk, can you move on?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have council liaison announcements. Councilwoman McCartney?
Okay, let me start with a thank you to Lions Club, Rotary, Unico, on behalf of the West Orange Chamber, if you were able to attend the Thanksgiving Luncheon, it was a beautiful event. And thank you to our speakers, Joe Fagan, our mayor, Rabbi Mendy Kasowitz, and also Reverend Platt from the Niobaptist Church. Very inspirational and timely messages. We also at that Thanksgiving Luncheon thanked Mickey Wagner for serving 10 years as the Executive Director of the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, and introduced everyone to Brittany Childs, who will be taking over as the Administrative Executive Director for the Chamber. And now, and I would like you also to save the date of February 3rd for the annual breakfast, where we elect the, nominate the new slate of officers for the Chamber, and also the mayor gives a State of the Town address. Save the date, February 3rd. We have not, we are sending out the proposals for venues, so those have not come back yet. Friends of Edison, I would like to, we just had a meeting last night. Friends of Edison, they're doing the lined shaft in the heavy machine shop at the museum. The Friends of Edison is the fundraising arm of the National Park Service, and we have committed to raising $10,000 to repair the machine shaft, and so they are looking for funds, if anyone would like to contribute. But we are also interested, or also requesting, if anyone is interested in joining the Board of Trustees for the Friends of Edison, please let us know. Our next meeting would be January 13th, 2016. If you're interested in attending and serving, the meetings are held at the National Park Service at, on Main Street, at the Edison Lab. Planning Board, I'll keep going. We don't, we haven't had any applications except for the county and their courtesy hearings up at Turtleback Zoo, so we are using our time efficiently to go over the rules and any discrepancies that we're finding in the chapters that deal with zoning and planning. So, nothing really to report, but we will be getting recommendations from the Planning Board, just to make sure that everything coincides. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd just like to say, congratulations to Downtown Alliance on a great Holiday Open House. It was very successful. Lots of people, a lot of new friends were made down at the Holiday Open House. People running into each other, didn't know they lived here or participated here. So, my congratulations to Cherie Wilson, you know, who did a good job, to Megan, to all the guys. All you guys did a great job, a lot of hard work. It paid off. We want to thank the Community House for allowing them to use their future new gym and their athletic facility. So, it was a great time. The trolley tours were fantastic. People learned a lot more about the Township of West Orange, and there's so much more that we're going to be doing, and again, my family, my Downtown Alliance, and congratulations. Also, again, I mentioned about the Pedestrian Safety Board, and tonight, at Rutgers University, the Edward Blaustein School of Government and Public Affairs, the students in the graduate courses are making the presentation that was specially done for the Township of West Orange to add to our complete streets and to our public safety, to streetwise pedestrian safety, and it all came together. We couldn't be there tonight because we couldn't change council meeting, but Professor Charles Brown of the Institute will be coming here for our next meeting in January and give a presentation to hopefully some of the students because they're done, but he told me to tell them that they were very impressed with the Township of West Orange, and they thought we have so much to offer, such a great community, and the cooperation they got from the administration and from all of us in doing their study was beneficial to their future careers. And the Pedestrian Safety Board has really taken off. We're getting some great data. We've had some great assistance from the county with information, and we thank the county for that. And just moving right along, there are just more good things that are coming out of this, and that's all I have to say. Councilwoman Castellino?
Well, the PR commissioners have been busy. They were playing Santa's helpers last week at the Holiday Bazaar. Timmy Williams is here. Thank you for working the table during the day, handing out the little goody bags that Megan Brill so kindly put together for us, and Chris Asenica was down there as well. Joe Reiki, our newly-named Vice Chair, was taking pictures and wrote a lovely article that he put out to the Tap, which was nice publicity for the event. Also, members down there, Dr. Josie Velez was there, and Claire Kropoviac was there as well on the trolley. So, very busy, working very hard, they're a great group, trying to get the word out of all the wonderful events that we have here in West Orange, and there's more to come. The rail litter, we're looking to have a rail litter open house in February. I actually received a date today from Ms. Juretsky. We're going to use either the Liberty Middle School or West Orange High School for the event, and we just have to get that date verified with the rail litters in town, so hopefully I'll be announcing that at our next meeting. And so, they've been very busy, and I just want to thank, you know, Megan, you did a great job at the open house. You really, really, and your committee, you have some committee members here, you're going to be speaking a little bit, but you've worked really, really hard, and it was very well-attended. I know I jumped out of my comfort zone, you got me on that trolley, and trying to speak, you know, as I'm standing and shaking up there, I gave myself a B minus. I've heard all you did a very lovely job on the trolley, but it was a lot of fun. And also, I want to thank Dr. Josie Velez. Her and her husband Zavales worked very hard. Josie's our commissioner, and she brought to Liberty Middle School this weekend a play that she actually coaxed most of us of not only attending but being a part of, which was a lot of fun. Definitely brought us all out of our comfort zones, and we did, brought a little bit of Filipino culture to the audience with the cross and the sword. So, it was a lot of fun, and it was an experience, and I want to thank her for all her hard work, her and our Deputy Mayor Zavales for working so hard on that as well. Also, we attended the Spanish Heritage.
Hispanic Foundation.
Foundation's Toy Drive Sunday, which was very heartwarming and really put you in the mood for the holidays, just seeing the kids come up, and they've done, they did a wonderful job. They really, really had a lot of toys to choose from, and, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Cirillo, this is your thing. I'm sorry. I apologize. So, I won't say anymore, but thank you. That was a great event, and congratulations, you did a really, really nice job with your committee there. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kropoviac?
Speaking of being pulled out of your comfort zone, I just want to clarify something to anybody who hears, the rumors that I forgot all 15 lines of my soliloquy. I only forgot one. And if you'd like me to prove it, I can recite the 15 lines right now, but I think for the benefit of all concerned, I won't. I was unable to attend the West Orange Open Space Committee meeting last night, so I don't have anything to report, but I would just like to ask, while I'm talking, if we have any sort of update on downtown redevelopment. I just asked, I assume it's Mr. Sayers, but just to see if there's anything new.
No, nothing more to report than where we were at the last meeting. Like I said, they submitted their plans, they're being reviewed by upstairs, and I haven't heard anything else on the JV agreement or the construction loan.
I wanted to find out about the construction loan because, as you recall, at the October 27th council meeting, Mr. Diaz, who's one of the principals of PRISM, said he expected it to be 60 days or so before they closed the construction loan. Since we won't have another meeting until early January, you haven't heard anything else on that?
No, I have not, but we're staying on top of them, I can tell you that.
Okay. Maybe you can update us on if they do have the loan at the next meeting, and if not, maybe you could just have an explanation.
When they get it, I'll let you know. Trust me.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cirillo?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Castellino, yes, that was a very, very awesome event. We had a good turnout. We're grateful to have, this is an event that was held this Saturday by the West Orange Hispanic Foundation. We had over 400 toys given away, and children from the neighborhood coming in to the church, and through the leadership of Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez, who was going through a difficult time, as a matter of fact, his father passed a couple of days before, but he was strong enough to be able to get the event forward. We had Santa come in and pay us a visit, so it was a beautiful event. And our other Deputy Mayor, Zavales, was also very proactive, like you said, and play. I couldn't make it, I couldn't be part of it. He was home, still recovering, but it sounded like it was a terrific experience, and the best part was to benefit the West Orange Scholarship Fund.
Yes.
So, that is, that should be acknowledged. And thank you, Dr. Velez, for that work, and thank you, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman. Okay. I'd like to go into our public session. Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our December 15th West Orange Township Council Public Conference Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building in West Orange and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Kropoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to open the floor now to public comment, so anyone from the general public who would like to address the Township Council, please raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you. Come up to the podium and speak into the microphone. Would anybody like to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Williams.
At the podium?
Something I wanted to hand out.
Sure, of course, sure.
Does everyone have one?
Yes.
Again, my name is Tammy Williams. To the members of the town council, it is with...
I'm sorry, Tammy, your address, please?
16 Hillside Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It is with great pleasure that I share with you a marker initiative project of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for February 16th, 2016, in honor of Black History Month, and to celebrate one of our own pearls of West Orange history. We would like to partner with the Township of West Orange to recognize the birthplace of our founder, Anna Easter Brown, and erect a marker in her honor. We would like to erect the marker in front of the West Orange Public Library on February 5th, 2016, at a 12:00 p.m. unveiling ceremony. Anna Easter Brown was born on April 13th, 1879, on Easter, in West Orange, New Jersey. Anna Brown was the daughter of Beverly and Laurie Brown. Anna Brown graduated from West Orange High School with honors and was well-prepared for Howard University, the top historically black college in the nation. It was a time when only one-third of 1% of African-Americans and 5% of whites of eligible age attended any college. Easter was part of the original nine group of 20 founders in Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. It was the first sorority founded by African-American women students. It has had a continuing legacy of generating social capital for over 107 years. Since then, the sorority has flourished into a globally impactful organization of over 283,000 college-trained members, bound by the bonds of sisterhood and empowered by a commitment to servant leadership that is both domestic and international in its scope. At Howard, Brown worked as the chief evening librarian while she completed classes at the Teachers College Department. On January 15, 1908, Brown, along with eight other women, helped to found Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Brown served as its first treasurer of the sorority. She also composed a sorority song and helped write the final draft of the sorority's constitution and bylaws, and during the planning sessions, she documented the sorority's history for the future. Brown graduated in 1909 with a BS in education. Brown also completed graduate work at Columbia University as an educator at the high school level in North Carolina for nearly 40 years. She had a critical role in teaching the next generations. With her outstanding qualifications, she maintained a high academic standard. She developed exhibits to teach the community about African-American history. She helped found the YWCA in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, and expanded Alpha Kappa Alpha by founding a local chapter. These institutions created social capital, and Brown died on March 5th, 1957. Brown currently has two markers registered by the Historical Marker Database, one in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, indicating some of her work, and another marker indicating the location of her grave. In consultation with our town historian, Joe Fagan, who has researched extensively her birthplace and graduating class documentation, we identified her birth residence was located on Mount Pleasant. She attended the West Orange School that was located in the vicinity of what is now the town library, and she graduated West Orange High School with honors and was well-prepared, as quoted in several documents. Mr. Fagan has and will continue to be a valuable resource, providing historical background data on Brown. I've also met with Library Director Dave Cubey, who also agrees the library location would be ideal. As he mentioned to me upon exiting this evening, he's also spoken with a couple of members of his board, and they are elated about this opportunity. The cost of the marker will be incurred by Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. We would like anticipating your approval, your input on the style and design of the marker from the attached recommendations. The style of the markers is similar to other historical markers that are located in New Jersey. For the marker erection, we would invite the mayor, council, other local and state dignitaries to attend in an unveiling ceremony. Members from Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and other dignitaries will also be invited to attend. We anticipate guests of approximately 100. The press has historically attended these events with prominent news coverage. We would also like to request that the Public Works Department identify and prepare the location for erection before the end of the year, so that we can beat the weather that we hope doesn't come quite yet. Thank you, council members, in advance for your time and support of our initiative. This little piece of history will continue to promote West Orange as the great town that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Nicely done.
Thank you very much.
Nicely done.
Nicely done. And good documentation.
Thank you.
This is why she's a PR commissioner, not at this time.
We'll have questions.
Right. How efficient.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, Mr. Kropoviac?
I'll be brief. The Holiday Light Spectacular Turtleback Zoo began the day after Thanksgiving, and I can tell you, within the last two weekends, we established two single-day attendance records at the zoo. So, two weekends ago, we welcomed about 17,000 people on that Saturday, and then this past weekend on Saturday, we welcomed about 19,000 people. What's even more great about the event is that we're collecting non-perishable food items, new toys, and... about the event is that we're collecting nonperishable food items, new toys, and generally-used and new winter coats. I don't have the figures on the coats or the toys, but for the nonperishable food items, not including this past week, we collected about 25,000 pounds of food, which is about two-thirds of the way to the record amount that we collected last year. So I'm sure with the numbers, this past weekend and then through the end of January, through the first three days of January, we'll even collect more than we have in the past. Another piece of information about the zoo, on Sunday evening at about 6:38 PM, we welcomed our 700,000 visitor, which is the first time in the zoo's history that we've welcomed that many people in a single year. It was a family from Plainfield, and we kind of caught them off guard. It was their first time to Turtleback Zoo. The mother had been there as a student in grade school, and this was their first time back, and they were just impressed with the whole thing. So hopefully, we'll get a few thousand more this year and go on to bigger and better things next year. So I just want to let you know that Holiday Lights continues until January 3rd. Your Library Director mentioned that one of the gingerbread houses from our contest will be on display at the library on December 19th at 9:30. We do at the Environmental Center in Roseland, that's when we have the award ceremony, and will unveil all the winners in the four categories that we have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks, Anthony.
Our best wishes to the county.
Casualty?
As of Thanksgiving, I'm back on two feet.
Right, no crutches.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay, moving right along, Madam Clerk, about the-
Council President.
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Mr. Madsen.
Absolutely, Mr. Fagan.
Very briefly, I'd just like to expand on two quick points.
Can you state your name?
Joe, name it.
My name is Joseph Fagan, and I have been called worse, but most recently, the West Orange Town Historian. Two quick points. Where the proposed plaque for Easter Brown goes, it has a tremendous amount of significance because the high school that she attended, and I believe Tammy mentioned this briefly, the high school that she actually attended and graduated from in West Orange is today where the John P. Renner Center is. So the plaque will be very, very close. And one other note I'd like to add, Howard University, where she attended, was founded by Oliver Howard, who was a Civil War general after the Civil War, and he was in West Orange the same year that she graduated. He was giving a, he was a guest speaker at a reunion for Civil War veterans, which was held at that time at Eagle Rock in 1898. I just wanted to add those two points.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
You always have great fun facts.
You know, you always have a good one, Joe, really.
I think the most.
Okay. Thank you. Is any, are there any other residents who wish to speak to the Township Council? If not, I'll close public comment and open the council chamber to my council colleagues. Councilwoman Castellino?
Hi. Thank you, Tammy, for coming down this evening. I know we had discussed it at our PR commission meeting, and you were very detail-oriented, as usual. So, thank you for bringing it before us and your research. And Joe, thank you for assisting her with that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you. Again, a great presentation, and I think it's a very worthy cause and a contribution to the lengthy and deep historical significance of West Orange. Does anybody in the administration see any potential problems with this? Is this pretty much a done deal?
This is the first I've heard of this, to be quite honest with you, so we're going to have to obviously research the cost and how we can get it done.
No, it's getting paid for.
Ms. Williams says that the sorority was going to take off the cost.
Oh, okay. Installing it is probably very simple. I don't think that would take very long time.
Sounds like you guys got a conversation in the near future.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
As great an idea as this is, I'm sure, you know, there may be in the future, and we had discussed this, that where other markers, people may want to advocate for other markers in the township. So I think, you know, going, moving forward, you have this item paid for, you may not in the future. You may need to form some kind of, I would assume, like we were talking about, the PR commission, I didn't feel it was a place for, you know, these kind of decisions to be made. It should be more thrown Joe Fagan's way with the Historical Preservation Committee.
I'll talk with Joe.
You know, again, this is, you know, your thing, administration, so, but there should be some kind of process and protocol, because when Tammy brought it to us, we, you know, I didn't know if there was a process, and I found out there wasn't. So if we could create one moving forward, I think that would be beneficial.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cirillo?
Yeah, thank you, Tammy. That's terrific stuff. It brings great pride. Like everybody spoke to our township as residents. It's just a terrific initiative, something to be proud of. And Joe, you're a treasure. Every time you get up there, it's just terrific facts and I hope.
I wish my wife shared.
I was just going to say that.
You know what this is a public meeting, right?
Yeah, and Anthony, I just send our well wishes and our gratitude to the county executive for the great work at the South Mountain Reservation. When we leave town, that's something to be proud of as well, and we always tell people about the magnificent offerings at that reservation, from the playground to the paddle boats, to the zoo, the arena. It's something to be proud of as a West Orange resident, so thank her for his hard work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Council President.
You're very welcome. Tammy, great presentation, and it shows the rich history and diversity of the community of township and the contributions that our residents past and current and future have made to this great country of ours. So I applaud you on this initiative, and, you know, this is something we need to move forward on and everything else. It's good, and more people should feel that way about our residents, and thank you very much. Thank you for the hard work. Anthony, our thanks to the county, the county executives, the board of chosen freeholders, for the gifts they've given the Township of West Orange at, you know, the Turtleback Zoo, the whole SS County Recreation Center. People come from all over, they see it. It's something that the township shows, it's something that we could use. I hate to use, I like to use that word, that we need to use that as part of our marketing tool, to show people, these are the rich things and assets and quality of life that are available to visitors and to residents of the Township of West Orange. So we thank you, and we thank the county administration. Councilwoman McCartney?
Not much left to say, except thank you very much for this presentation, and you're in good hands here, but you're also in good hands with Joe, because anytime you sit with Joe Fagan, you learn something new every day. I like that you have sample text-only on this sign, because maybe in discussion with Joe, there was an application, or there is an application for a grant, and we are looking for historic markers along Main Street. So, you know, I would want there to be continuity, so we have our eyes and ears open for these grants, and, you know, this could be the first of others that we can place, not on Main Street, but all over town. So I think it's a great idea, and just like your last sentence says, it promotes, it promotes the history in the town.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Joe, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Joe. I mean, you've been a teacher to me. I learned more, you know, talking with you, but thank you, Joe. And thank you for the assistance, thank you for the assistance you give our residents and departments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, I was wondering, I know as part of the consent agenda, but going into resolutions, could we go ahead and do Resolution 27, 275-15, the public hearing adoption of the Township Downtown Alliance budget, or we need to go through the regular?
I think we should go through the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And then when we could pull that and-
Sure. So, Madam Clerk, can you continue with the consent agenda, please?
Okay. Approval of minutes, public meeting and executive session, November 24th, 2015.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
No.
Consent.
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Castellino?
I don't know if I need to pull it. Oh, I don't know.
Does anybody else need oh pulled? I have a question or two.
You can ask a question.
You can ask a question.
You can ask a question without pulling it. If you want to ask a question, just ask it now or-
Okay. Let me pull it, because I need a minute just to get my-
That's 289-15?
Yeah, oh.
Which was?
Okay. She's, is she asking a question or pulling it?
She's pulling it.
Okay, okay.
Well, I just have a question.
You just have a question, or you're pulling it?
Well, I just want to know the savings, like the benefit from being in the fund versus not. I mean, I know we have consortiums at the school board, so is this the same kind of concept?
Mr. Gross, could you answer?
Historically, joint insurance funds have provided great savings to municipalities because they, number one, from a policy perspective, they understand municipalities better because they're run by the municipalities. In this particular case, this is the third, we committed to the JIF for a three-year period. This is the third of those three years. We do renew it by resolution every year based on the terms and conditions, but we committed to that. So we did not shop a third party on this, because, again, we're committed to go into it. So this year is less, we're 20, almost $25,000 less this year than it was last year because of some of the changes that we, you know, made in some of our exposures last week. We had a really good year with workers' comp, so some of the administrative costs were less this year than previous years.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask just a quick follow-up while we're-
Sure, Councilman.
Is that okay?
Absolutely, Councilman.
Just a quick question. I noticed where you have saved about $24,000. Previous year, I noticed that raised a couple of deductibles a little bit. I assume that's acceptable risk that you've looked at the-
Yes.
Was there anything else that was done to the contract besides that to-
No, that's it.
Okay. So, job well done. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilwoman, Castellino, are you any other?
On L, I had a couple of questions on the janitorial services. I mean, again, because I wasn't, you know, just brought onto the council, is this the vendor we use currently?
It is the current vendor, yes.
Okay, and then you're satisfied, and how many people, like, do they usually, how many, how large is their staff when they come clean the buildings?
I can't, I mean, I can't tell you throughout, for the entire thing, because we have, we have one person that comes in daily for this building.
Okay. So you're satisfied with their service?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kukoviac?
Can I just ask another follow-up question?
Sure you can.
Ms. DeSantis sent an email back that said that this contract is actually almost $5,500 less than the previous contract. Is that over multiple years? Is that over the three years, or just on an annual basis?
I believe that's an annual basis. I'll double check that.
Okay.
As I read her response, I thought it was annual basis.
Because that's a significant amount of money if that's on an annual basis. So, again, was there anything that was changed in the contract?
No.
Or was just the benefits of competitive? Again, congratulations.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Thank you. I had a question about Agenda Item G, Resolution 281-15, Resolution Authorizing the Collective Taxes to Rebate Payment to the Listed Taxpayer Subject to Final Judgment. These are tax appeals. I thought that I noticed in the document that we were sent just some typographical errors, because we had same dates for three different payments to one property owner and the same situation with another property owner over two amounts. I'm just wondering, has that been corrected, or can we, or can we at least-
Joanne had looked those over and I think responded to you that, you know, with, she didn't, that, you know, she was satisfied with it. So I don't, again, I didn't look at it any further than that.
Okay. But it's three dates, identical dates, and then three different amounts on the first one. I don't have it in front of me. I just think there are errors, and if I'm going to vote for it, I'm going to vote for it.
Well, there would, no, the dates would be the same. The dates are the date of the judgment, so that would be correct.
Not for the years?
Not for the years. The years, the tax year is what rules.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the dates would be the date of the judgment. So they get it for, in other words, when they do a judgment, they're going to judge, they pass down a judgment for three different years, but they do it on the same day.
Okay, thank you. And I don't need that one.
Yeah.
Thank you. I wanted to ask on Agenda Item J, Resolution 284-15, Community Development Block Grant. If we just pass this on a consent, we won't have any opportunity to discuss maybe changing our priorities. Is that correct? Because I'd like to pull that just to see if I can, if I can convince my colleagues to move up one of the items. Have a question about, oh, no, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask, sort of inconjoined, Agenda Items P and Agenda Items Q. Agenda Item P, 290-15, is a Resolution Authorizing Emergency Appropriation. This is to get authority to borrow one and a half million dollars to pay for health benefit claims over and above what we had expected. And then 291 is just basically authorizing you to move ahead with getting the notes. I just wanted to ask, because that's obviously a significant amount of money, and I just wondered if you could talk about how we could have been so far off on our estimates?
The answer is, is that we, you know, under self-insurance, we have, really have no idea what the individual employees' health concerns are going to be over in the coming year. So this particular year, based on the estimates that we got back from, from the actuary, who is involved with the fund, we budgeted accordingly to that, and our experience is just, is significantly higher. The, these two, these two resolutions, one authorizes, approves the emergency, which we are going to, otherwise, we'd be overexpendent, and we don't want to be overexpendent, number one. And the second one is to authorize us to borrow the money. If we do not borrow the money, and this is a short-term borrow, because it'll have to be raised next year's budget, but if we don't, then we would have to dedicate surplus to these expenditures, and that would have a negative impact of a million and a half dollars on next year's budget as well.
So we were projecting about $6.2 million in expenses this year for both employees and retirement. We're about, at this point, we're about a million dollars over. So that's like a 16, 15 and a half percent.
I still have two weeks left to go.
Okay. That's what I wanted to ask you about, because you asked for authority to borrow one and a half million dollars. I just did the math, and it looks like our overage is a little over $960,000, so we, in the numbers you gave me. So that leaves another-
Hopefully, we won't spend it.
Okay.
If we don't spend it, then we don't use it. But, you know, we, you know, we're running at a certain clip. Like I said, we have at least two more payments left for the, I'm concerned. I want to make sure that we authorize enough to cover us, because if we don't and we overexpend, that's a problem. So at this point, this will cover us for, I believe, and obviously, I could be completely wrong on this, if we have an even larger deficit in December. I'm hoping that we don't have that, because I have estimated over what I, you know, what we were trending, just to make sure, but-
Okay. So even though we might authorize one and a half million dollars, you don't necessarily expect to pay it?
If we don't, if we don't get the exposure, then we don't spend it.
Okay.
And then the money will be, we'll borrow that, but then when we repay it next year, we won't have to raise that difference in the budget, because we'll just give that money back.
Okay. Is this going to impact us going forward, say, our 2016 premiums and coverage based upon this?
Well, our premiums, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, our exposure for 2016 will be, the actuary was looking at our 2015 experience for that, so yes, it will. And it will impact our budget, because we have to raise this million and a half, or whatever that number is in next year's budget. So it's a particular challenge for us next year. So, it's a, it's a particular challenge for us next year.
Right, okay. So, we can expect that our costs are going to go up for healthcare? But obviously, we wouldn't know at this point what that would be.
Well, we're waiting, hoping to have finalized numbers soon.
The biggest issue is it's, most of the cost is based on loss run. And we, you can't determine what that's going to be. You could have a good year, and your loss run is low, and you can have a bad year, and your loss run goes up. Unfortunately, this year, we had some people who had some issues, and we had a larger loss run.
Right. Does this have anything, any impact on, I remember, I guess it's been maybe eighteen months ago, maybe two years, we were planning to put together sort of our own joint insurance, joint insurance plan with a couple of other municipalities. I haven't heard anything about that for some time. Is that still something that's...
It's still something we're looking at. The issue, one of the issues, we didn't do it was because one of the other towns had a bad year, and we didn't want to join with them, because then it would have drove our cost up.
Right.
And now here we are, the next year, and we're having a bad year. So, it's, it's still in the works, but we're trying to get it where, you know, everybody is at a nice level number. But unfortunately, it doesn't work that way.
Right, okay. Just one more thing, you know, I asked you about what of our outstanding debt is, because this is always something that I try to focus on. If I understood the numbers that you gave me, it looks like when we borrow this, we're going to have outstanding debt of about a little over seventy-six million dollars? Does that sound about right to you? I took the supplemental debt statement that you gave me from September.
No, well, the difference is that doesn't, those numbers don't include our pay down from this year. So, we probably paid down about six million, between five to six million. So, so it's going to be in the low seventies as opposed to the mid-seventies.
Oh, okay. Just, I still wanted to flag this, because even if it's a pay down to seventy million dollars in outstanding debt, I just took a look at where our outstanding net debt was at the end of two thousand and eleven. And I know you weren't here at that time. But that debt at that point was less than fifty-seven million. And now we're talking about roughly seventy million, which is up almost a quarter, almost over thirteen million dollars in the debt, which has me concerned for two reasons. Number one, just the absolute amount of debt that's got to be repaid, and it's got to be repaid basically through taxes. And then the other concern I have is that we've been borrowing a lot of money short-term because interest rates are so low. And as you probably know, the Federal Reserve, Federal Open Market Committee is probably tomorrow going to raise first, rates for the first time in about nine years. Is there, is, is, does the administration have a plan for what we're going to do with all these outstanding notes? Because obviously, if interest rates are going up, we don't want to keep it. And I think it's like, I'm just trying to look at the numbers here. Maybe you know them. Notes issued are about a little less than thirty-two million, and then we've got another nine million in authorized but not issued. So, we're talking about forty million dollars in notes. That would be subject to real short-term interest rates.
Yeah, right, we're, for two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, we're looking to go long. Probably a significant issue sometime in mid-two sixteen. You're right, the Fed is announcing a rate increase. That's, that will, that will impact primarily short-term money, not necessarily long-term funds. But we don't really know, you know, what the long-term outlook is. But we, the plans are to go out for some, in two thousand and sixteen, like I said, about probably mid-year, and to try to capture the benefit of what are around. Still, even with this increase, we believe, we'll still be historically low long-term rates.
About one percent. About one percent.
But that's for the, that's the short term.
Yeah.
And there's also, just one more question, and I'll, I'll close, hopefully. Agenda Item I, Resolution two eighty-three dash fifteen, is authors amendment to the agreement with Delta Dental of New Jersey. This is for our dental benefits. Could you tell me a little bit, we were talking about some of the other savings that we got with some of the other areas of our insurance. In this case, the, the cost for us, the premium stays the same?
Yeah, our savings here is, there's no increase.
Okay.
And we, you know, we looked at whether going, if we'd gone out over two years, we would have had actually a four percent increase. So, the, they, obviously, the actuaries, their actuaries think that the prices, pricing is going up. It's not uncommon, we've, they've always done that over the two years, and we've been doing one-year extensions at zero. So, I'm hoping that, you know, part of that was marketing. But, you know, I think, you know, we're satisfied that this, and the important part about this is that they really have the penetration of providers that our employees are using, as opposed to, most of the plans do not. You know, or we'd be a big interruption, and that would be a problem for us from a union point of view as well, negotiations. So, we're pleased with this outcome.
And that's been a situation we've ran into the last few years, where this has by far the best penetration in terms of being able to give people providers near where they live.
Yeah, so that and a zero increase seem like a slam dunk to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Serrillo?
Yes, thank you, Council President. It was a good discussion, you know, comparing the amount of debt two thousand and eleven to now. It's really difficult, though, sometimes, right? Because if you go back to two thousand and eleven, the amount of debt, we work, there was a period where the economy was good, right? And we were able to, to collect in revenue a high percentage of taxes, so we didn't have to borrow. So, that kept, it kept borrowing low, because the tax rates were high, the collection rates.
I think, I think another, another huge factor on that was, was post the crash, if you will. You know, the township didn't borrow and did without capital a number of years, which by definition lowers your number, and you don't, you don't really, but you're also not investing in your infrastructure. So, I think, you know, in the past, over the past few years, we've been making up some of that, well, investing in our infrastructure we hadn't done before, or we hadn't done for some period of time. So, you know, I expect to see that level out over time.
I do have some quick questions, very simple questions. Resolution two eighty-five fifteen, this is for the grant. I'm really not clear on what the application is for. This is two eighty-five fifteen. It's an application for a historic preservation grant?
Yeah, we did one, we had one last year where we actually went out and looked at historic properties and did an inventory of them. This, this goes further into that, and it's, we had a meeting today with the state. It's, it's a, basically, it's a lump sum contract that we will be looking to get out and get as much service as we can for it. And basically, you know, it's going to be coordinated through the historic preservation.
What's a cultural resource survey in the neighborhood?
Right, in other words, we did buildings and properties last, now it's cultural resources. So, it's basically, it creates an inventory or catalog of the resources that we have within West Orange.
Okay. Thank you. And the other question I have is, wait, before I move forward, do we have to pull Resolution two seventy-five fifteen?
Yes.
Two seventy-five fifteen.
Okay, so we'll ask that to be pulled. And then on Resolution two seventy-six fifteen, we are, we would enter into agreements with these different entities throughout the town to provide senior citizen services. Now, since the town is providing, I mean, granted, it's a minimum amount of funds per organization. Since the town is extending this, this amount of funds, is that, does that mean it's open to the general public? Any activities that are held with these funds? Meaning senior citizens that are not residents of these particular properties?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Sure, the question is, we're extending two thousand dollars to the different organizations for senior citizen services.
Right.
My question is, since it's, you know, funds, public funds that are coming to fund these, the programming, is it open to other seniors that are not residents of those facilities?
Well, by rule, if you're using public funds, it has to be. So, I mean, we try, you know, we utilize them for our senior citizen programs, but...
I think the nature of these is that, in many of these cases, it's, it's reaching our residents who live within these facilities that we can't get to. So, to the extent that we're providing assistance, or these organizations are providing assistance to us to reach our residents that live in those facilities, I think that's the focus of it. So, I don't know, in terms of who could actually go in and use them, I think we'd have to check with, you know, with...
I mean, I understand, I understand that perspective, but I, you know, you understand my point, too.
No, I understand exactly what you're saying now.
Okay. That's all, that my question was answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other?
Okay, that's it.
Councilman McCartney?
Interesting that I pulled two of the same resolutions. And coincidentally, Tammy is still here, that the resolution that Victor Serrillo was mentioning about the historic preservation, this is a grant to recognize cultural resources in our town. So, we are, we do pursue that, and we'll continue to do that, particularly now that you brought the markers. That is something that we have been looking at. And the other grant I just pulled was also about the senior services. And I can say that they are open to the public, because they're mostly recreational and social events. And I pulled it only because when I first got elected in two thousand and two, started a knitting club at the Rent a House, and I'm so pleased to see that it's still on this list, and they still meet on Thursday morning. So, I do know that that's open to seniors if they like to, if they like to knit. So, yes, it is open. And the other resolution, I wanted to say thank you to resident, to employees that agreed to transitioning to the bi-weekly payroll, because I, hopefully, we do realize the savings by doing a bi-weekly payroll as opposed to processing one a week. So, it'd be interesting to see what that looks like.
That will be a definite benefit for, for the township.
Great. That's good news.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. I wasn't pulling it, they were just...
Sure.
About the reference to the paychecks. Is that going to be direct deposit starting next year? Or are we still sort of...
Most are.
We do that now.
We do that now.
Direct deposit.
We've always done that.
Okay. Okay. So, am I the only person in West Orange who does not get...
You could be the only person.
No, I get a check all the time.
It's only because you're new and you haven't...
So, I can have direct deposit?
Sure you can.
How long have you guys been doing direct deposit?
A long time.
Since two thousand and two, I guess.
Oh, my gosh. Because as you probably know...
Probably about sixty percent of our...
Yeah, well...
Get them to paperwork, the ass break, get them to work.
Chase closed their branch here in West Orange, and, so now I got to go out of town to deposit those checks. So, that's going to be a blessing on me. No, I'm a dinosaur. I'm a BlackBerry dinosaur. I have what is probably the last BlackBerry that was sold at retail in West Orange.
Chase has one of the best technology, huh? Thank you. You're welcome, Councilman. My congratulations to the administration on all the cost savings. You know, it's great. And I also thank you to our unions and our employees for going along with a lot of concessions and changes and, you know, all the bi-weekly payroll. So, it's great, it's working together. And then, little by little, we can, we can chip away at expense going forward. I just have one question. I know I have it someplace, and I have to go back and find it out, but talking about the debt, the amount of debt, do we have a breakout of the components of our debt? Like, how much is to pay tax appeals? How much was it to pay employee benefits and some of that? Do we have that?
Do you have a breakdown? In other words, when the debt...
Broken up by component, like, of this, of the, say, the seventy...
In other words, how much are we paying in capital?
Right, how much is capital?
What is, what is it going to? Most of, most of the debt that we utilize, that we borrow money for are capital projects. And now that the state has allowed us to do that for accrued time, we've been doing that payoff accrued time.
The accrued time, okay.
Most of that.
Yes, we have, we have breakdowns of every dollar. No, I know, and I was saying, is like, was there a chart? And I know I had it someplace, and I did it, it's like, how much I saved the seventy million? How much is tax appeals? How much is... Annual financial statement, that's a breakdown. I'll take a look at it. Thank you, Mr. Gross, appreciate it. I also have a question on the CVDG application. Okay. Huh?
Pulled.
Oh, it's been pulled, okay. Thank you. And of course, we're doing the Downtown Alliance. Okay. Madam Cork?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? The consent agenda is implemented.
With my council colleague's permission, and I'd like to do the Downtown West Orange Alliance budget submission and presentation. And I guess we'll have to move out to the front seats, so we can see the presentation. Welcome, Ms. Brill. Mr. John McRoy, Chairman. Mr. Kevin Cruz, Member of the Board.
Okay. My name is Megan Brill, and I'm the Executive Director with the Downtown Alliance. The Downtown Alliance has never had a clearer vision of how to improve the Main Street corridor. In two thousand and sixteen, we planned to spend the majority of our time and resources recruiting new business and promoting the great stores and restaurants we currently have. Okay, the Downtown Alliance is made up of eleven board members. We call them Board of Trustees. They are elected for positions every four years. We have one mayor appointment, five town council appointments, one town council liaison, which is currently Council President, Cherry Guerino. And together, they hire the Executive Director. That's me. I work for all of them all the time. Okay, so the Main Street corridor, this is what it looks like. We have a hundred and eighty property owners. Fourteen own more than one property throughout the corridor. Forty-two owners have homes that live in West Orange. We have fifty-five businesses that are also business and property owners in their locations. We have ten properties that have second-floor space. And we have eight other properties similar to the community house and churches and that sort of thing. We also have four municipal parking lots. Okay, in two thousand and fifteen, we had a budget of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars that was allocated over the six categories that, I'm not going to enumerate what they all are, but the categories haven't changed, and the money hasn't really fluctuated too much, except for in two categories. Marketing and promotion, we overspent the budget. And in visual design, we underspent our budget. But overall, we still came in seventeen hundred dollars under our anticipated budget. Okay, so with the two thousand and fifteen accomplishments that we incurred, we had capital improvements, we bought the new Lando and Quigley lot parking signs. We also had great fundraising efforts with our street fair and the mayor's 5K run. We had great networking opportunities. We've done several new ribbon cuttings for our businesses, and we had lots of roundtable meetings. We've had more community involvement, and vested business owners attend our meetings and events than ever before. We had strategic development, training, seminars, and the beginning plans for our strategic plan. We also had more people attend all the training that's offered throughout the state by Main Street, New Jersey, than ever before. Corridor visibility. We have new holiday banners that are out now, and other tangible inventory like tents and tables and things that help support what we do every day. We've had partnerships with the Public Library, the Thomas Edison National Park, the Chamber of Commerce, the Public Relations Commission, which is actually pretty new, and we're real excited about them. There's a lot of them, and they all want to know all about what we do. So, it's great having them on board. We also are working with the Board of Education, they're a great help to us. The Community House, of course, and then the Pleasant Valley Civic Association. So, that's in part some of the accomplishments that, that we had this past year. Okay, the two thousand and sixteen budget. Our income comes from several different sources. We have a property assessment of a hundred and five thousand dollars. We have a township contribution of sixty-eight thousand dollars. But all, the twenty-eight thousand of that is inclined services, like my office and the lights and heat. So, really, the cash contribution is forty thousand, eight oh nine towards our budget. We had seventeen hundred and twenty-one dollars carried over from this past year. We had additional fundraising from our two events that made over eight thousand dollars. So, we're carrying that into the next year. We're anticipating twenty-five thousand dollars in new fundraising for this year, and we're using twenty-six thousand in reserve funds. We also get about seventy-five dollars in interest income. Together, that makes a new budget of two hundred and seven thousand dollars for two thousand and sixteen. Okay. Our proposed budget of two oh seven will be allocated again among the seven, among the six categories. We have administrative and office expenses is up a little bit. And there's another slide that'll explain what the differences are in the categories. We have insurance and professional services. We have to provide for economic revitalization. It used to be called... It used to be called development, they changed the, the name this past year, Main Street, New Jersey and the Historic Preservation Commission. Marketing and promotions, we added a little bit of money to that, and we have design and visual improvements, as well as organization. So last year, in all those categories, we spent a hundred and ninety-two dollars, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and we're proposing two oh seven. There's an increase of fifteen thousand dollars, and this is how it's allocated. We have increases in administrative office and marketing and promotion, and decreases in, slight decrease in professional and insurance, a decrease in economic revitalization, and a slight decrease in design and visual improvements. Things to note about all of those numbers are that there's a five thousand dollar increase for the Executive Director, that's my salary. We have one thousand dollars additional for summer intern or office staff help. We moved Joe Fagan out of marketing, we moved, we moved Joe to marketing and promotions out of economic development, and we increased Joe's salary three thousand dollars overall for the year. We provided eight thousand dollar economic revitalization plan, and we provided twenty-one thousand in marketing and promotions. There's one more. And we reduced visual design by five thousand dollars. Our top priorities going into 2016 are business recruitment. We want to create a new marketing brochure, commercial realtor, open house, and actively recruit new businesses to the downtown corridor. We have, we had a glitch with this part of the PowerPoint. It didn't like the computer, but here is Kevin Cruz, one of our board members, looking at the parking sign, and that was supposed to fly off the presentation, and what came back was a cute picture of Kevin holding the shopper's parking sign. So I'm hoping to fix that tomorrow for when it goes on the internet. But Kevin said, "We need to give our property owners all of the tools they require to recruit the businesses Main Street shoppers want. In 2016, we will use our survey results and consult with experts on Main Street revitalization as the basis for our strategy to properly market the corridor." It's a direct quote from Kevin. Okay, the second top priority, along with business recruitment, is marketing and promotion. John McElroy is the Alliance Chairman. "The Alliance is encouraging all residents to visit downtown West Orange and purchase the goods and services that you already need and use. Our board is excited about the future, and the view from downtown looks great." John McElroy. Some of the things that we're doing for marketing and promotion in this coming year are increase our online social media posts. We're going to have more district roundtables and networking opportunities. We're going to continue our bi-monthly newsletter for businesses and residents. We're going to have special promotion days and weeks to encourage folks to come downtown, new business directory, and a brochure for the business and, for businesses and property owners to use to help recruit better tenants. This is a picture of a building on the corner of Washington Street and Main Street. You may remember, it's where the tow truck went through and the Machados thankfully were not hurt in that building. Kevin Pierce is the owner of this building, and it's a great example of what we really would like to see all of our buildings look like downtown. What Kevin was able to do is utilize the building's natural exterior and colors. You can see, I have a pointer here, Kevin didn't cover up the brick, there's no painted brick. He used the same coloring for the brick that's around the windows in order to enhance the natural exterior of the building. He also created the same signage for each one of the four different stores that are in that corridor. They, that's a mainstream beauty bar, this is a new store that's coming in, this is a clothing store, Purchased Possessions, and then there's another core around the corner. All four of those stores have very similar signage, creates continuity and makes it look really nice. One of the other things that's important about these signs is that they're framed and properly affixed to the building. The brochure that we're going to put out will explain this to people, that you need to not have all the nuts and wires that contain, that hold the sign up, that it looks flush with the building and that it's in a safe and proper manner. Property owners have to read the ordinance that's really, really thick and sometimes difficult for them to understand, so we're going to put together the Cliff Notes version, and that'll be contained in our brochure that outlines specifically what people need to do. We also are encouraging no handwritten notes or tape on the windows. Went to Main Street Training, and they talked about how tape is a four-letter word, and we don't want it on our windows. So you can see, both of the, all four of these stores contain no tape or written, handwritten signs in the windows. We also are encouraging obstruction free. You can see all four of those stores, you can see right into their, right into their stores. Mainstream Beauty Bar has, she changes her window every couple of weeks, there's always something neat that you can see inside there. And in Purchased Possessions, you can see all, all his clothes and everything that he has for sale. So we really are going to use this as a model for what we'd like to see going forward. We've already had property owners call us to make sure that the grant that's included in the budget, a matching grant, is going to be available. We have new property owners that are excited about, once the snow clears, if it ever snows, that, that they get to, you know, participate with our grant and be able to, you know, change and improve their storefronts. Okay, so there's just a few more things that we're trying to concentrate on in 2016. We're going to continue to build great partnerships, very excited about the Public Relations Commission. I love that Michelle is now the liaison to that, and I was at one of their meetings, they've got ten brand-new people that, you know, are excited about getting involved, and they want to be partners with us, so we're welcoming that relationship. We also are going to work with the Arts Council. We're going to reinforce the downtown brand. See our lightbulb paperclips are the newest addition to all things downtown. We're going to increase our volunteer base as we're getting busier. We need more and more help to be able to reach and service our community, and we're going to need to increase our volunteer base. We're going to continue to implement the four-point approach to Main Street. We're going to include more residents on our specific committees. We have five or six different committees that meet throughout the year, and we need residents that are actually going to join them and, and participate and make more of what is downtown their own. And we're going to finalize our strategic plan. Stay tuned, because there's always something more downtown. Okay, we have comments and questions.
Are there any?
That was eight minutes.
Any comments or questions? I'd like to get back up to the dais.
Yeah, yeah, come back up. I have a couple of notes. I, I'd like to introduce the board members that are here tonight. We have our annual meeting tomorrow night. So we have Kevin Cruz, that is one of our Board of Trustees, Joe Fagan, who's also on our board, Mike Brick, and John McElroy, our chairman, and I don't see anyone else. I, I want to remind you all that this is a volunteer board, I'm the paid, paid person, and Joe gets paid a little bit of money to do what he loves to do downtown, but their commitment to the corridors unwavering, they keep running right after me and keeps us all moving forward. We meet monthly and then some. The guys get together regularly for breakfast, even when we're not having a meeting. The public support for what's happening on Main Street is growing. I used to think that it took me a long time to get through ShopRite as a Board of Ed member, and now I can't go anywhere without being really spoken to about all the great things that we're doing and people that really, really want to participate with what we're doing. I want to mention that we've had four or five new property owners turn up in the last three months, and those are West Orange residents that invested in property downtown, which I think is huge for us. We also need to make a commitment towards the, this budget and the, the work that we're doing. It's, it's not really just the Downtown Alliance anymore. This is truly the funding mechanism for what we do, but I got to tell you, people are coming in my office and talking to all of us all the time, that it's, it's grown into, you know, people really caring about what Main Street looks like, and not just complaining about it, but wanting to do something to help. And we need your support in order to continue that, and I request that you vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I can take questions now.
And I like being part of the family, too. The breakfasts are getting good.
Oh, that's right, Jerry Green.
That's okay. It's okay. Thank you.
Jerry Godpock.
Oh, okay. So I'd just like to, again, thank you, Megan. Please stay there, because there'll be questions. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on the, on the West Orange Downtown Alliance budget?
I need to do it again.
He had the camera off. Seeing no one wishing to ask questions about the Downtown Alliance budget, I open it to my council colleagues, Councilwoman Castellino.
Well, Meg, it's great to be working with you once again. Not a surprise, all your hard work, we see right here in the, in your thoughtful presentation. It is very exciting, I've attended a few of the open houses and being able to witness the, the energy firsthand, and, you know, that, that is the word out there, energy. Down at the Holiday Bazaar, people were excited, people are buzzing. I'm excited to see the, the, you know, what the community house has to offer now with the, with their new building that they're renovating, and the right programming, I hope, you know, when those meetings occur, that the right programming is presented for that building, it will bring parents down to, down to Main Street and, and to shop. So I, I see the vision, I'm excited about the vision, and I really don't have any questions. I had asked them already, I've made some phone calls the past couple of days, so I'm fine, but very nice, thoughtful presentation, very exciting for the work to come, and thank you to all your, your volunteers, because we, we know time away from home and all the time that you put into Main Street will definitely be beneficial for the township, so thank you all for coming out and for all that you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kokoviac.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. The, it would, it would be helpful if perhaps next year, we could get the presentation ahead of time, just so it's, it allows...
You mean the PowerPoint?
Yeah, yeah. I, I know, I know this came, this actually, the initial, it was initially on the budget, I'm sorry, council agenda, several council meetings ago, and it appears that perhaps maybe some of the numbers have changed slightly since that time.
Thanks.
Like, for instance, in, in this that we got initially, it says the intern's going to be paid two thousand dollars, and I just heard you say that the intern's going to be a thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, Joe, can you...
I mean, it's not a big...
I, I can't, I can't hear you, I'm sorry. I, I got the part you wanted, a copy of the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, I think it would just be helpful, it would just be helpful.
Okay. Actually, we're going to do one this year, I kind of panicked on Wednesday and said we should throw something together.
Yeah, I, I think the presentations are very helpful, and not only for the council, but for everybody.
The public, right.
Everybody seeing, yeah.
And Michelle.
But it looks like perhaps the, perhaps some of the, some of the budgeting may have changed since the first time you gave us this.
I didn't intend for it to.
Just in the, in the narrative, it says the intern's going to get two thousand dollars, you just said tonight that the intern's going to get a thousand dollars. So I, I don't know whether that indicates that other things have changed, too?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. One of the things that...
I gave Victor my, my narrative. Oh wait, no, here's another copy.
And, and it would also be helpful to me if, all through the process, if we could just keep sort of the same format for the financials, because it's, it's, it is perhaps me, but I, I have a trouble following different formats as to what's being spent.
We plan, we plan to present, I'm sorry, I meant to cut you off. We plan to present this format with just the six categories going forward, what the total spent were in the six categories, and what, and what the budget is for that.
Good, good, I appreciate that. I see a lot of good things in here. I think the, the fundraising, you're projecting to get, to raise twenty-five thousand dollars in fundraising next year, which I think is a, a good example of, of self-funding and also that we're getting people downtown to actually do that. So I, I think that's good. What I wanted to look at, when I look at the Downtown West Orange Alliance, the first thing I think of is, what's the bottom line? And for me, the bottom line for the Downtown West Orange Alliance is occupancy and vacancy rates in the district. And I, I didn't hear any in the presentation. Can you give me some of the, what the 2015 have been, and then maybe take a longer view of where...
It's still about forty.
And also turnover.
Yeah, it's still about forty properties that are vacant. It was forty-one last year, and it's forty this year. They're not the same properties, so I, I, I can tell you that when we, I report those numbers every quarter, and one of the things that we, that we built on is that we needed to be ready to recruit new businesses. We need to be ready to deal with the property owners and what we expect for, from them. And we've built now two years of foundation building, and that's why this whole budget is really centered around recruiting businesses and promoting the great businesses that we have. So there's about forty properties. I could tell you that Kevin Pierce's building, the building that you saw in the presentation, his one store was vacant for two weeks, and now a tenant is moving in, and the other, the other store rented right away in his building. So I think people saw the very nice building and, and they were coming, so.
Do you track time on, time of vacancy at all, so you can tell how long storefronts are being held vacant?
It varies. Some have stayed vacant for a while, a couple of years. Some have had plans for development, and then they fell sort of flat. We were excited about the future auto body building, and we thought that he was going to get started, and I think we all are trying to get in touch with him and his realtor and find out what's going on, but that sort of fell flat. The other property that we're looking at has, it has building, building issues. The roof is leaking, and the tenant moved out, but moved down the street. So we, you know, we watch that. I think that it's an underlying theme for us to not concentrate on or not talk about the vacancies, or I think I, in last year's budget, I called them, "I didn't want to see vacancies." It was like, I don't know, opportunities for new business or something like that. But what, what we found is that folks are, are renting, are buying these buildings, and new stores are coming. We have a brand-new clothing store that y'all came to the grand opening, and we have a new restaurant down here in St. Mark's. So things are moving, but I got to tell you that we're going to be tracking that, and when we do our little soundbite before you all year long, we're going to talk about the vacancies, because hopefully by March or April, we'll be in the position to really actively recruit with a, a good handout about who we are and what, what kind of money we spend and what kind of businesses we want. So that's a concentration in part for 2016.
Okay, I noticed that you were talking about recruiting as the number one priority, and yet when I looked at the area for, for actually recruiting, it looks like you're only have economic development, only eight thousand dollars, which is one of the smallest categories you have. What, do you have a, a specific plan to try to get more people to even look at these storefronts, you know, from a retail perspective, or...
Right, we actually do. We have two kinds of vacant properties downtown. We have properties that have a realtor as their owner or a guy that markets for them, like Kevin Pierce is a realtor, so he actively seeks new tenants from just what he does. We also have the other kind of owner that is going to hire a realtor or, you know, put the sign in the window that says, you know, "For rent, come rent me." What, what we found is that there's a lot of misinformation out there about, about West Orange, about the money that we spend. So come January, we're meeting with the firm, and we hope to, and actually, Kevin, if you wanted to talk about this a, a little bit, we, we have a plan to create the material that we need to be able to hand off to realtors and property owners to say, "This is why you need to rent in West Orange, look at the demographics here, look at the kind of money that's being spent here, because it is great." And in addition to that, you have the Downtown Alliance. We get the resources, you know, we get to help businesses that other, you know, other parts of town don't get. You know, you don't get facade grants, you don't get, you know, business development. There's like ten of us attending a Constant Contact email session tomorrow morning, and that's because of our relationships that we've had with Main Street, New Jersey, and the Chamber, that we're able to do that. And you can still come if you want to. But go ahead, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Well, you're nothing if not consistent. Because you challenged us on this last year, when you said, I think your comment was, your view of economic development was not consistent with what we were saying. And I spent a lot of time thinking about that over, over the, the last year, and spoke with and challenged, you know, our board to really think about what does economic development mean. mean, and, you know, talked to members of your colleagues, obviously Jerry being the liaison, and Sue as the president of the Chamber, and what we really came to conclude was that I think we were defining economic development more as marketing, and not what you envisioned economic development to be, which was to really bring in a different kind of business and really have a plan. And what we did is, we partnered with Main Street New Jersey, and said, you know, this is, this is the focus now, beyond what we do on sort of a day-to-day basis with our activities and, you know, all of the fun things, we now had to up our game a little bit, and we had to become more strategic. And we had to put together a plan to bring new businesses and a different kind of business environment into the corridor. So, Main Street New Jersey is very adept at doing this, and they advised us, and they call it economic revitalization, so call it what you want, what we need to do is to go out and identify the businesses that, that customers, that people want, shoppers want, in the corridor, and then find a mechanism to go attract those people. So, what we did was commissioned a survey, which some of you may have participated in, and that gave us the basis now for identifying what people want, okay? Sample size was somewhat small, but it was, it was big enough to be valid. We took that sample now, and we are going to hire a consulting firm that has done a lot of work in the immediate area, in this kind of consulting, and they were going to help us put together a marketing plan to go out to the people that Megan just talked about, commercial realtors, people who are looking to buy real estate, you know, developers, whomever it is, and target those people. So, yes, while the budget is somewhat small, what it's really focused on is doing that marketing piece. So, that $8,000 is really going to be geared towards the mark, putting together the tools to help us market the downtown corridor. The labor, as you might expect, is going to come from the volunteers and people like, you know, the members of the board to go out and to do these things. The Realtors' Open House, something I've been talking about now over the last year, which was really an idea I stole from the town that did a residential open house a few years ago, and from what I understand, it was pretty successful, in getting people to look at West Orange as an alternative to South Orange, Maplewood, other towns, as a place to reside. That's what we want to do now, Joe, we want people to come down here and look at West Orange as an alternative to some of the other areas, focusing on what it is that people want, okay? Then going out and finding those either regional or national chains, other individuals who want to open a store and are looking for good real estate space, and try to get those people now to come down and, and open their business here. Now, in addition to that, you know, we threw out a lot of different things in the presentation, but it all ties together, because if you look at the turnover in the space, and that's one of the things that is really troubling, we have a lot of turnover, okay? Part of that is due to, you know, it's nothing unusual, it's not that, you know, there's anything wrong with the community, but most businesses, small businesses fail, it's just a fact of life, they fail, okay? And they fail because they're under-capitalized, they don't have a good business plan, they are what I like to call hobbyist businesses, you know, you might have something you like to do, you might like to knit, and you say, "Boy, I'm going to go open a knitting store, and I'm going to put it in the middle of downtown West Orange," and guess what, nobody comes, because nobody's interested in that business, okay? So, what we have done is, particularly in working with Main Street New Jersey, is put together, and we don't talk about this a lot, it's one of those things that, it's not really sexy, nobody gets really excited about it, you don't have 100,000 people coming into Main Street, but we spend a lot of time and a lot of effort on training. So, if you want training to develop a business plan, we provide that for you. If you want training on, I don't know, how to use some, you know, new technology, Constant Contact, I think was one that she just did, you can come to the training and get this kind of training, okay? So, we're working with businesses to try to help them become stable. The second thing that we've done, which, you know, Megan didn't really, didn't really talk about, but we have tried to streamline in working with the folks in the planning department, Janice and Robin, to make this a business-friendly environment, that when you come into West Orange and you want to open a store, or you want to open a business, the process, the bureaucratic side of the, the process of opening your business is going to be more streamlined. So, we've got a good relationship, and a good working relationship with planning, building, and Megan, to help make this process really go quickly. And then the whole idea that, that businesses that do come in here and want to open, and maybe have some of these, you know, potential pitfalls of being under-capitalized, and let's face it, we have a lot of people who are opening businesses here that are immigrants from, you know, other countries, where all you have to do to go into business there is put your wares out on the street, and you're open for business. Well, that doesn't work here. So, they need to understand exactly what it is that has to take place. And these are all tools that we're using to help people be successful, but the most important thing, I think, is that we need to understand what it is that people want here. And that started with the survey, and we can expand out from there, and then go out and try to find those businesses, and not just leave it to, you know, the happenstance of a, of a building owner saying, "Okay, I've got somebody who's going to pay me rent this month, and, you know, I can make my mortgage payment." And six months later, guess what, they're out of business, and we see that happening all the time. Or, to your point, you know, storefronts stay vacant for an extended period of time. Now, there may be other issues that go along with that, some may, you know, for whatever reason doesn't want to rent that, that space, we can't help that, but we can help them identify the proper business, the people who are legitimately prepared to, to go into that space and stay there. So, that's kind of a long-winded answer, I think, to your question, but if you look at all the things that we're doing, it all ties together now to this idea that we need to go out and find, we need to find the businesses that are going to be successful here, and not hope that a hobbyist comes in and happens to hit the right idea at the right time. That's not working so far.
Well, I agree with you on the idea that we should position West Orange, and particularly the district, as a value to some of the other downtowns around us, so I think that's a really good idea, I think it's a really good first step. But I guess my next question would be, what's the sort of timeline to take that next step, which is to identify who the, who the businesses should be, and then go out to get them? Is that something that's going to happen in 2016?
Yeah, well...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And it's sort of interesting, you know, because I thought we're way out in front of this thing, and we're trying to, you know, think in terms also, what happens when, you know, the redevelopment plan comes online, and I think there's going to be a lot of buzz about that, and that's going to get people interested in looking at the corridor. And I thought, wow, we're way out in front of this stuff, and what we found out is that we're really, you know, we're really, you know, hitting the edge of the backside of that timing, that you really should be out in front of this stuff by about two years.
Twenty, twenty-one months.
National chains are out looking two years in advance, so we have to do this now. This is putting pressure on us to react now, which is why we did the survey, and we have that information, and we can focus on the kinds of businesses that people are looking for, so we have to go out and do this immediately. The marketing, you know, I don't want to say that it's sort of a canned approach, but it's pretty typical of what other towns have done. So, we're not going to want to reinvent the wheel here, you know, we're not going to do something that is extraordinarily different in terms of getting information, all of this is just about, this is about getting information to a commercial realtor. And as, you know, as Megan said, we have to kind of look in the mirror and be honest with ourselves, and say, you know, there is a lot of bad information out there about our town. Well, let's get the good information out there, let's, let's make people think that, boy, this is a great place to have a business, and when you expand outside the corridor, we got great schools, we got great parks, we got 700,000 people coming to the zoo, we got 100,000 people coming down to the Edison Museum, there's a lot of great things, we have to get that information out. And that's what we need to do immediately, so this is a lot about information, getting to those realtors to say, "Don't think about South Orange, Maplewood, Milburn, you know, other communities in Essex County, think about West Orange, because there's a lot going on here." And it's got to happen right now, to answer your question, it's got to happen now. And now is the time, I mean, you know, we're all optimistic that the redevelopment is going to finally get off the ground here, so now is the time, we've got to make it happen, but, you know, we need that information, and that's what we're pulling together.
Right.
And you kind of went to where I said, there's a, you know, people have a, you know, put out a lot of bad information about West Orange, I saw your face, they do.
Yeah.
They do. And, you know, you look at, you looked at the corridor, and you talk to people who are in the business, this is not the first choice, to take somebody who's looking for a location for a business. So, what we want to do is make it the first choice.
Right, it's, it's just going to be hard, because some of the numbers just aren't working for you, you know, the amount of vehicle traffic, the amount of parking spaces, the amount of foot traffic.
Well, that, that's what was funny about Kevin and the parking sign, because we do have, you know, four dedicated parking lots, we have off-street parking, we have on-street parking, there is ways to get to the parking areas close to the stores that you want to be at, we need to better advertise those areas, and that's part of wayfinding and the capital improvements that are built into the budget, that we're going to continue with new signage, we're going to continue with wayfinding, parking lot is here, there's a spot on the website that we can say, "Oh, you're going to Benji's Taqueria, the new restaurant, you can park on the street, and you can park in the parking lot next to Fitzgerald's," so that you will know, people will come down, and they know where they're going. And on Facebook, you see people are like, "Where can I park, where can I go, where?" They need information, and a lot of that is strategically planned, not expensive information that we need to provide, and that's where our resources come back to, our volunteers. I can tell you one, one other thing, the company that we're looking to hire to put together the brochure that we need to start recruiting and giving us the leads of the businesses, they did a study, I remember it was on the Alliance, but it was, you know, 2006, 2007, right before the big crash, and they came before the town council, they did a year-long study, I guess Main Street New Jersey gave a grant, it was $100,000, you know, project that they invested, all these guys, Main Street New Jersey, paid for it, for West Orange, and they did a whole big presentation, and then at that time, it was going to cost us $20,000 to purchase the marketing material, and then be able to go out and gather the leads to recruit businesses. And at that time, the Downtown Alliance wasn't into that idea, and the township wasn't into that idea, so it sort of fell flat, the market cap, you know, crapped out, and now here we are, you know, 10 years later, and these guys can do the same thing now for like $8,000. So, that's where, and I didn't, $8,000, what we could afford to put dedicated to this line item in this coming year, and ended up that, that's what they're, they're charging, you know, about $8,000. So, we're excited about that, but a lot of this is happening because of better, better volunteer, better program, Main Street's not supposed to be about the paid folks on Main Street, it's supposed to be about the volunteers and the leadership of our specific committees, and we're getting busier and busier, that we're going to need people that are taking on a leadership role and pushing out the good, the good news about downtown, and, and that's our focus in this coming year.
But what the property owners and the tenants want to know are the metrics, what's the, what's the traffic, what's the foot traffic?
Right, all that stuff goes in...
Are we doing, are we doing any of that, because that's what's going to sell us as a value?
Absolutely.
Exactly, and that's what, that's what a realtor wants to see.
Yeah.
Now, they, listen, they hear the fluff, and, you know, we sell the sizzle, but they want the steak, okay? They want to know how many people are coming down the corridor, you know, is there ample parking? Yes, there's ample parking, okay? You know, all of those things are what they're looking for, so they can say, "I've got the right client, and this is going to be good for them, and I'm not going to be embarrassed, or I'm not going to be, you know, showing this property again in six months." Absolutely, those are the kinds of things that we need to, and we do have, but we need to get it out there.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris, thank you, Megan.
I'd just ask a couple of other quick questions. Mr. Fagan's show, how, how are you guys funding that? You mentioned that he's being paid a salary, is that the total cost of, can you tell me a little bit about the cost of Mr. Fagan's...
We pay the West Orange High School TV studio $1,500 a year to support Joe in taping the show, and we pay Joe $18,000 a year, yeah, $18,000 a year in this current budget to write the scripts, produce the show, and do a lot of online, on-location shooting. So, the outside cost outside of Joe is $1,500.
Okay. And how many shows a year?
It's one a month usually.
Okay. Has, were there 12 shows in 2000?
12, 12 shows, Joe?
Yes, yes.
And there'll be 12 next year?
Listen, Miss Pearl, also make sure Mr. Fagan also videotapes all the grand openings and...
Right, there's a whole host of, pretty much Joe's time is wrapped up in creating the scripts and producing the TV show, the other stuff that he does for us is because he likes us.
In terms of the content of Mr. Fagan's show, is it, is it just, these are just facts that I'm asking about, but I noticed, I was looking at some of the videos, which are, which are, are nice, but I noticed, for example, there was a lengthy piece on the Olympic swimmer, Ginny Dunkle, who, Olympic multi-metall winner at the Olympics, and I wouldn't think of the Ginny Dunkle pool and Ginny Dunkle as being part of the geography of, say, the Downtown Alliance, and so I'm just wondering, is there...
The pool's downtown, Joe.
The pool is downtown.
I understand it's, I understand it's downtown, that's not something that comes as a surprise to me. I'm just wondering what your, what your portfolio is, do you...
That, that's a fair question, Joe, and the Ginny Dunkle show, the interview you're referring to with Ginny Dunkle was a bit unique in that it was the 50th anniversary of the opening of the pool, and she had returned to West Orange specifically for that purpose. So, we kind of took a little poetic license, if you will, in devoting the whole show and the interview to make people aware of who Ginny Dunkle were, and believe it or not, you know, 50 years goes by in the wink of an eye, and there's a lot of people who have no idea that Ginny Dunkle was a high school girl from West Orange, left West Orange High School to go to the Tokyo Olympics in 1964 and won a gold and bronze medal. And, you know, just to put that slightly in perspective, that was less than 20 years after the end of World War II, and at the opening ceremonies, Emperor Hirohito of Japan presided over those ceremonies. But to further answer your question, we try to make it a mixed bag of variety, all aspects of West Orange history, we don't necessarily limit it to downtown, we try to make it all-inclusive, and there have been certain occasions where certain segments have been a little bit more lengthy, only because I don't want to shortchange the public on presenting a particular story.
Right, and I understand that, and of course, I'm a big fan of your work going way back.
Thank you, Joe.
But my concern is that part of the Downtown West Orange Alliance is funded by the CID property owners, and I'm having a hard time thinking that they're getting their money's worth if the shows that are being funded talk about areas that aren't part of the CID. So, I was just curious as to whether that's understood as your portfolio?
Yes, I, if I may, Megan, I share your concern, Joe, and I try to strike that delicate balance, but I also would respectfully point out that it's part of a, it's part of building civic pride in total West Orange, you know, downtown is part of West Orange, and yes, that is what's funding the TV show, and that's where our primary focus should be, but by default, it's going to expand into other areas, and it creates an aura of civic pride in West Orange, and it, it's one cog in a very big wheel of what I like to label intangible benefits. You know, there's just no way of knowing exactly the benefit. Is it going to drive people downtown? Yes, that's our intent, but we'd have no numbers to support that, only other than the feedback we get from, from the, what the work that the Downtown Alliance is doing. And Megan, I think you wanted to add that...
Yeah, I actually, no, Dave Drell, Dave Drell sits on our board, and I'm very much aware of the fact that some of the time that I spend is outside of the corridor, and sometimes some of the time that, you know, we all spend is outside the corridor. We do that for a very strategic reason. David wants to make sure that all the garbage cans that we refurbished are staying downtown, and he keeps a close eye on, you know, all of those expenditures. What happens when we partner with, Joe did a big segment on Luna Stage... What happens when we partner with, Joe did a big segment on Luna Stage. When they did, um, they just had a new show and he interviewed Cheryl Katz and we ended up doing a whole big story about Luna Stage. What ended up happening, the byproduct of that, was that now the Luna Stage folks want to, um, work with us. They want to incorporate everything that, that we're doing in, with them. And we, we get, we get their resources and they get ours. I think that as long as we are dedicating enough time and resources to support the corridor, that the stuff that we end up doing on the outside of that, um, is okay. And I gotta tell you that, you know, David is on, is on our board, John McElroy is also, you know, a property owner and my husband is a property owner. So I understand and I, I, I care very much about every dime that's in that budget. And all the time that we spend, I actually cut the slide that talked about, you know, every dime that we spend needs to benefit the business owners. And if it doesn't, we should consider not doing it. The consider not doing it part is if it's good for our community, it creates goodwill for us. And then when I ask, when I meet you at the Pleasant Valley Civic Association meeting and then I say, I'm having this thing downtown, you know me and you're gonna come downtown. Creates credibility, credibility for the, all the things that we do. And I watch very closely our hours that we spend doing that. And Joe knows very, very well that a lot of what he does needs to benefit, have a direct benefit on the property owners.
Just one more question and I'll let you go. You've been very helpful. Thank you and I appreciate your patience. Uh, on the back part of the handout, there's a line item for farmer's market and other fundraising income. And it was projected in two thousand and fifteen to be fifteen hundred dollars. And the actual, uh, as of this publication is a hundred, is a hundred and forty-five dollars. That, that suggests to me that we've got, still got some challenges with farmer's market. What's, what are the challenges and what's the future?
Yeah. We, we definitely do and the plans for the market are still up in the air. Um, we spent a lot of time and effort. We hired a manager to be there on Fridays. Uh, and with only one farmer, it's difficult to get people to come to our market. Um, so we are gonna, you know, look at that again. And, um, and that's why we didn't budget any money, um, that we would make, that we wouldn't be making any money on the market this year. The fundraising dollars entering this budget are the street fare and the mayor's 5K. And if we, you know, are able to pull off a successful market, um, or decide to do that, that's up to the board to decide, um, that'll be plus.
Could you tell me what the challenges are or, or do you know in terms of?
Well, yeah. People want to come to a variety of farmers. We had, uh, our, our second farmer leave. Um, he actually isn't doing a farm on Fridays. And, um, people want two farmers. They come to, you know, buy a variety of groceries from two different places at, at least. Roseland's Market is on Friday and it's fabulous market right on Ugorock Avenue. Um, I think that people come to, uh, what, the, the goal of the, of the farmer's market, this is why I'm struggling with, with continuing the market. The goal of everything that we do needs to financially benefit the business owners and if it doesn't, we should consider not doing it. The farmer's market's a good example of that because what we thought was that people would go buy a pepper and then grab a beer at Tom's and our sandwich at Angelo's and then go home. And they didn't do that. They came and they got their vegetables and they left. And we didn't see a direct benefit. When you think about the time and effort it costs to support the market when it doesn't directly benefit our businesses, why should we do it? You know, there's, it's great for our township to have a market. We have to weigh the, the cost of, you know, the time and effort. And then it is truly the only thing that we don't do great. And that bugs me 'cause I like being great. Um, but yeah, so we're struggling. We, you know, we're, we're struggling with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cirillo?
Yeah, just some quick questions. Thank you, Council President. Uh, under Joe, Mr. Fagan, under the marketing and promotions or perhaps Megan, um, I, I happen to have, I, I don't have Comcast so I don't get News 12. But I can, I can catch your show if I'm on Files, on the Files Network?
Yes. I also, I also have them posted to YouTube, uh, but I'm guilty of being guilty behind
and having the latest content up there.
Sure.
It's very time consuming and, uh, a little embarrassed to say that it's not up to date, but, uh.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So what channel would it be on Files?
Forty-five.
Forty-five? Four on forty-five? Oh, okay.
Forty-six, I believe.
Yeah, 'cause you mentioned TV. It was picked up by PBS.
Uh, no, there's, there's a little confusion about that. There was a episode of.
Got it.
Drive by History.
Yes.
That was on the New Jersey Network that you requested.
I do support the, uh, the show that you had on the Jenny Dunkle pool because I consider that, you know, as a draw, like a marketing tool for the downtown. Uh, the, the more traffic coming into the pool, the more, um, the more, uh, exposure to that name, the more people that can see what, what we're doing downtown and, and perhaps, uh, stop at one of our stores. So I think that that, that was a positive.
Yes, thank you. But to Councilman Kocviak's point, uh, that's not really, uh, how our normal show is. It's kind of a little bit special for Jenny Dunkle. But yes, I agree with you and that's why I focused.
Right. When we think Jenny Dunkle, we think driving through Main Street to get to the pool.
Absolutely. We spun to the Elks afterwards.
Good point.
Yeah. And, uh, the other question I had, I did wanna mention, I just spoke to Councilwoman McCartney. We have some reinforcements coming in, uh, in the form of the Economic Development Commission. Uh, the plan is to restart the, uh, commission, uh, next month, uh, once we kick off 2016. And we're hoping that, uh, you know, that will help us, uh, bring in, uh, you know, some additional, uh, thoughts. I mean, you, you're lucky to have, you have Kevin Cruz, uh, who sounds like he's, he's doing a wonderful job. And of course Chairman John McElroy is a big, big, uh, a big fan and cheerleader for the downtown. Mike Brick is in the audience as well. Um, you know, always, uh, it's always nice to talk, uh, Mike, about your ideas. Um, but, uh, but anyhow, Economic Development Commission, we have some big, we have some big ideas and plans, uh, to, to help in your efforts. And you get, you're getting us excited. Uh, I really, really appreciate that. Um, I do wanna mention.
Victor, may I just ask, mention something about that? What's really important is the, the town council throughout that we're gonna have an Economic Development Commission and there's no budget or money attached to it at all. So you're gonna have a whole bunch of people sitting in a room, you know, having a good eye, a good idea that you can't do anything with. Um, so we're really hoping that once you get all those people together, although I already poached like four folks that had mentioned that they, that they're gonna be on our academic development team. But we, we absolutely work together. That's what's so exciting about, and I put all those groups in there that, that we're working with, the Public Relations Commission, you know, I, I see that the, the, that, that commission will be exactly the same. Where we're gonna overlap our ideas and really work with, with everyone and then foster collectively the, uh, this, this moving forward of, of all things great in West Orange.
As Kevin said, that developing that vision, uh, at the beginning would be key in terms of what economic development is.
Yeah. And I don't wanna tamp down your enthusiasm because we're, we're excited about, about that. And Susan and I actually had a lot of conversations early on and that goes back to what I was saying. Um, but to go back to what, what, um, Joe was saying, you know, our mission, our reason for, for existing is focused on the corridor. So we've, we've had a lot of people from, you know, different areas say, oh, can you come up and help us in XYZ neighborhood? We'll come as volunteers, we'll give you some time, but as an official organization, we can't do that. By law, we can't do that. So what I would really hope is that we can take some of the things that we're doing now and use that as sort of the template to go up to Pleasant Dale, to go over to St. Cloud, to move into Gregory and use it as sort of the, the template for them to do the same thing.
Right.
So that's really, you know, where we see this, see this going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And, uh, and we'll, we'll next, coming in, uh, into the new year, we'll continue, uh, pushing forward the redevelopment effort. I mean, now we see how it ties in to the big picture and that's why I, I always advocate for that because it's all interrelated and a lot of people don't understand that supporting that downtown redevelopment project and the importance of getting that through has, has a, a big impact in the overall, uh, in the overall, uh, development of, of Main Street and, and, and the revitalization, the word that downtown, uh, I'm sorry, the Main Street, New Jersey uses, revitalizing the downtown. It's all interrelated and it's all part of the big picture. So, uh, we're gonna do all we can next year to make sure that that, that continues moving forward.
Correct.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, if I, 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 you know, just, um, the budget and the scope and the concept were all well pointed. The whole idea is like all our colleagues have said, is spiking interest. When you spike interest with history, with any incident, it brings people down because they wanna see. They see it on TV. They wanna see what's downtown. So it'll come downtown. They wanna understand there are parts of downtown that actually have impacted the whole township, have impacted history, have impacted the development. I mean, the Edison Laboratories, there are still people in West Orange who've lived here for eons and have not been to the Edison Laboratories. Uh, and Councilwoman McCartney and I sit, and Megan Brill sit on the Friends of Thomas Edison, we sit on the board. Um, we're spiking interest and between Joe's videos and between his television shows, what we do is spiking interest. Where there is Jenny Dunkle, we should be very proud of. Where there is Simone Rollinson and John O'Connor, who were longtime public servants, who this building was built for them, um, it's spiking the interest. And, and when people get interested in an area, they wanna come and see for themselves. Uh, so, you know, you're marking and everything is very well focused. Yes, the farmer's market, Megan, I know you've beaten your head against the pavement. It's been hard. It's not easy for any township. I mean, I know of other townships who have stopped it because it just really sometimes doesn't, it doesn't work. And if you don't have two farmers, it, it, it does, it doesn't work. I mean, there are other towns in the area who have one farmer, but the farmer's market are food trucks, flea markets and the whole thing. And then it really isn't, you know, a, a, a farmer's market. So, um, you know, and what my colleague, Councilman Cirillo and, and Councilwoman, with, with the economic development. And Kevin, your points, well taken, has, as we build this, we bring it all together. You know, you bring all these teams together and you use the, the, the resources of the Downtown Alliance, it's gonna impact the whole township, especially with the downtown development. Once that starts rocking and rolling, it's gonna spike additional interest downtown. People are gonna see that somebody took the initiative to invest. And that's gonna bring additional investments and, and spike interest in the township of West Orange. So just moving forwards, moving the Downtown Alliance forward. And, and you've made many strides. I mean, just the Holiday Open House has grown from something that was just a trolley ride and breakfast with Santa, is now a Holiday Open House, it's a flea market. You know, people coming down, you know, seeing what's, what's to be offered by, by township residents and by non-t township residents. It, it shows that there is a worthwhile investment in the township. And, uh, I can only commend what the board has done to Chairman McElroy, to Kevin Cruz, to Mike Brick and to yourself and the other board members who we can go on and talk about. But it's just moving ahead with the Downtown Alliance and the support that we need to give you and it's paid off. The return has been there. It spiked the interest, just with the businesses that have come in and why they've come into the corridor. And of course, the Councilman Kocviak, we'll give him the data that needs, the vacancies, the turnover and time. Those are things we need to see. Any information to give to the Realtors. So Realtors can go out to people and say, this is the, the foot traffic that goes downtown. I mean, this is how we used to do it, you know, with, with the big box retailers. You wanna see foot traffic, you wanna see spendable income. And, and those things we can do and through the consultant, I'm sure that put together the package that you'll be able to give. And with your focus group. The focus group from last year produced tremendous information, a lot of participation, a lot of excitement. So I, now when we do the next one, that'll bring even additional excitement. So I wanna commend you and the board on, on a job well done. Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Hmm. Well, I think Joe said it best, really Joe Fagan said it best about civic pride because what you presented and what we saw has all been about civic pride. And it's about getting the word out, it's about, it, people want information. So if it's Joe's show getting information, even Two Eighty, I thought that was an excellent piece also. Um, and, well, when I did the Chamber Breakfast, that was part of my speech. It was, um, about how Two Eighty transformed West Orange. It got people into town, but it got a lot of people out of town. And now even this year with the Shop Local campaign, that's always been the Chamber of Commerce mission anyway. And look how much, how much participation is going on with that. So it gets people, you know, off of Two Eighty and stay in town. Um, I think it is more of a global picture. Yes, you're, yes, you're concentrating on downtown. But at the start of our meeting, Dave Cubey, uh, talked about the chamber having the member meeting at the library. The library has three hundred thousand items that are checked out. That's a lot of foot traffic. So we need to, that's, you know, one more space downtown. Um, you mentioned, Jerry mentioned the, um, National Park. The National Park has seventy thousand visitors, you know? Let's use, let's get them. You capitalize on the people that are already, um, downtown. Um, I just, I think we're working smarter. I think that's what's happening right now. We're working smarter with social media, letting people know what is going on. I love the idea of the PR commission, working on that brochure. We've been talking about it a long time. Kevin mentioned about, we actually rented a shuttle and, um, that was a PR commission years ago, rented a shuttle to take Realtors to all of our housing stock. So they saw, you know, everything available. And we have our pockets, we have pockets of commerce, but we also have pocket neighborhoods as well. And they were amazed at really the housing stock that we have. But they were armed with information. That's a little bit outdated. I tried to unearth that document that you referred to from two thousand and six. I remember sitting right here, being interviewed, um, about the demographics and the radius and how much wealth is in a five-mile radius of our area. Um, we've done an amazing, um, job on our jitneys, you know, owning a preschool. I see a lot of new families coming in because we have become so much more accessible. So we may not have that train station from Montclair or South Orange, which is really that appeal, but if we get the information out about how accessible we can be, I think, like I said, we're working smarter. But working smarter also creating these relationships and partnerships that we have. It just strengthens, to me, it strengthens your database, it strengthens your resources, it really strengthens everything, uh, that we have been doing. Just even an analogy about, uh, the Pleasant Valley Civic Association started out as a small little group, created now a pedestrian safety. And tonight, there is a conflict here, they're presenting, uh, work that everyone worked toward. And it's, uh, the superintendent of the National Park is at that meeting because Main Street was part of this study. So, you know, it's, it's really townwide and, um, I, I'm excited. I, I think it's a good thing and I think we're moving in the right direction.
I, I think that the one thing that I didn't mention was that if you could compare our organization to just three years ago or four years ago, I got hired in 2013, there is no way that you can, um, compare what we used to get done prior to 2013 and what we're getting done now. That it used to be just Denise working really hard in the basement or on the second floor. And we had a meeting, we all showed up for a month, every, once a month, and then we all left. And we cared about Main Street, but now we're actually moving. There's tons of people doing all kinds of stuff. And, uh, it's all these new faces, it's tons of new residents and it truly is, um, the beginning of something really great. Keeps me up at night 'cause it's gonna be great.
But, you know, it's a long corridor. So when you mention Luna Stage and you also have now the Arts Council right next door, you know, that's a whole new population of, of people that are drawn to that corridor. door, you know, that's a whole new population of people that are drawn to that corridor. On a different note, though, I was speaking to the building inspector, and as you said that you get a lot of phone calls, the Chamber is inundated with phone calls, so again, you know, that's a lot of momentum, but keep in touch with the building inspector because he said people are calling every day looking for space and-
Right, well, that's actually the very first letter that's going to go out in January is a letter to all the business and property owners that lays out the outline of what we expect from them, and that, you know, we'd love everyone to have Kevin Pierce's building. So we're going to give them the guidelines, and, you know, we show up, we go out, it's easy for business owners to say, oh, I didn't know, I didn't, you know, I don't know. So we're going to make sure that we're, you know, constantly out there and pushing our, what we expect. We need to ask them what we expect, and a lot of them are doing it, and those are the businesses we need to support.
And giving, I think, arming them with information. So I just think that is so vital about the schools, which is helpful, the schools, neighborhoods, all the assets that we have.
Absolutely. You look at that demographic study and you see the amount of, like, what, a family, a family of four spends $85,000 a year on stuff, and the vast majority of that does not get spent in West Orange. Kills me. We need to change that, and that's our plan, at least in part.
Okay.
Need a sporting goods store down on Main Street.
You know, to Michelle's point, we did have an approved planning, sporting good, and it was two fellows right here from West Orange. It was already approved 2006, 2007, when the bottom fell out. You know, we didn't see them again, so things change.
Yeah. Thank you all.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Ms. Brill. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, John McElroy. Thank you, Michael Brick for being here. Madam Clerk, I'd like to call for a vote on this, on 275-15.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt 275-15?
So moved.
Second?
So. Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
With Council President's leave, I'd just like to say something very briefly. I heard a lot of good things tonight. I'm, as some of you know, I'm in the marketing PR business. I like the idea of doing a lot of different programs and putting together stuff, but the bottom line for my clients is metrics. What is it that's moving my business? And I think we may, we meaning Downtown West Orange Alliance, may be on the cusp of doing something, but something significant. But I'd like to wait and see if maybe 2016 is the year that break out, that we get this vacancy rate down, that we get in, you know, higher level tenants. So, and I'm also just concerned that we need to keep our focus on the SID, on the Special Improvement District, just as Ms. Brill said about making sure that every penny is spent to benefit the property owners. And I'm not sure that we're totally focused on that yet, so I'm going to reluctantly vote no and hope that we get a little bit better story.
Council President, so, Councilman, having just said that, it just seems like how are they going to get the support they need if they don't have the support of the council? So all the things that you just mentioned need to happen, need to happen, period, just needs to happen. So I guess I'm at a turn, but I am voting yes, but it doesn't make sense to vote no, and you want to see that happen, but yet not lend the support to make it happen. I find it hard to believe. Sorry. I vote yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes, because Downtown Alliance needs our support, and we need to support our business district, and I think through this and through the operating and the budget, you providing those services, and we'll keep, you know, we'll challenge you and challenge you so, but, you know, we support-
They do it to themselves.
Right. You do it, exactly. So of course, I vote yes.
Okay. Motion is carried.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Is 284-15, Community Development Block Grant 2016 Priority List.
Who, Councilwoman-
Yep, I just, I just pulled in, just very briefly. I noticed that the Bethany Center for Champions, which is a great program and reaches deeply into the youth of our community, is down here at number five as the priority, and I would just respectfully ask that my council colleagues consider moving that up. I understand the argument for repaving and improving these streets, the four streets that are listed here, but I think the Bethany Center, if we support that and they get the money, will probably impact more people and will impact those people at a much more formative age in grade school and high school and really stand to benefit. So I would just ask my colleagues if maybe they would vote to put this higher up.
Well, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, I wanted to get an explanation of what they're planning on to support this for the Bethany Center for Champions, because I know they do have many after-school programs and whatnot, but I was just wondering, where is the 70,000 going? What are they planning on utilizing it for? I know a few years ago, you, you had budget, you had a block grant for them, and they purchased a vehicle. I mean, what are they, like, what exactly is this going towards?
My understanding, it's all for programming within their programs. They're going to use the money for programming. They've, they've, they've applied for this grant before, some years they have, some years they haven't. This year they reapplied. I did not see the actual application, but my understanding is from talking to Pastor Geithen, it's probably going to be used for programming, basketball-
Salaries for personnel to provide the programming?
I would think, I mean, if they're, if they're going to do programming, they're going to have to have somebody who's going to run the program, so I would think that would be the case, but I can't say that for sure because I did not see the actual application.
Okay. Council President?
Yes, Madam, yes, Councilwoman.
I see the importance, I know the importance in a Bethany church and the programs that they have there. Thanks, Richie. I think it is very important, but I am going to disagree at this point because I know that they get funding, and I know that they're, they're strong, and they are working, and a lot of things are in place already. With the other streets, I know just from last year, the, it was just a simple request to check on a street light, and we found out that Cherry Street and Chestnut Street, there were over a dozen lights that were out. So I want to see improvements in the other areas. This is the first time I've seen those streets on here. I think it's time that we look at that downtown area. Bethany, I know that Bethany will already get money, will be part of the funding. I'm not ready to prioritize that list at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Main Street, can I ask a question about Main Street Counseling? Just, they're on this every year. What, what do they give the township?
Their counseling services services people in the community.
Okay. I mean, is there a number? I mean, how many residents do they service?
I, I'm not sure, but I can find that now.
We can find out from Steve Margolis what the number is, but it continues to grow, and a lot of bilingual programs are now in place also.
Yeah, because my question is, because I know with the, you know, budget time, the PAL, the mountaintop, they all have to submit their budgets to the, to the township. Do these two entities have to submit you their budget?
They have to submit to the county. This is not our money. This money comes from the county.
But you still get to see a copy of it?
All the paperwork has to go to the county, and then, once they get the money, they have to then resubmit what they spent it on and how they did it, and the county reviews that.
Okay.
And if it's not done properly, the money doesn't get distributed.
Okay.
One of the, Council President, if I may?
No, please.
I had sent this to also Dave Cubey, also that he was here today to apply. I think it was probably too late to get it in because Dave is also looking at, looking for grant money to work on bilingual programs also at the library, so I think he would meet all the criteria. So maybe he's not here on this list, but hopefully by next year, that may be in addition to this, to these programs.
Thank you. Any other question, Councilwoman Krokoviac?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I'd like to call for a vote on this resolution.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 284-15?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Okay. Is that public?
Now we have-
Ordinances on-
Second and final reading. 2471-15, Revised Ordinance Amending Chapter Two, Section 52.2, Public Relations Commission.
This is, this is-
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. This is the ordinance to add to the Public Relations Commission, the council liaison, which was approved tonight of Councilwoman Castellino. So is there anyone here from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2471-15? Seeing none, I close public comment. I'll open it to my council colleagues. Any of my colleagues have any comments on this ordinance?
I think, I, Council President, I think Michelle will be an excellent addition to this PR Commission, especially in light of what we just listened to with the Downtown Alliance and information that's needed. Michelle will know how to get that information, not only from the Board of Ed, from all other agencies that are in town that need to go into that PR brochure, because I know that's their priority right now, and I think that's-
Right. I concur, I do.
Well, thank you for your confidence. I know we had already started, you know, reviewing the brochure and making some adjustments, and as you know, I will not be shy in my opinions.
Well, you're in the right spot.
Thank you.
But, you know, working with Susan Anderson and Harry has been a great opportunity for me. They're very talented individuals, so I look forward, and working with all the commissioners who are still here tonight with Tammy Williams, so it's, it's a great opportunity, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt, I'm sorry, ordinance 2471-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, now we have an ABC hearing. I need a motion to go to adjourn this town council.
So moved.
Are you going to recess and then go?
Okay. Because then we won't come back, right?
Correct.
At this point in time, before I call for a vote to recess, I just like again to thank my colleagues and the administration and the residents of West Orange for the opportunity of serving as your council president. It's been a fantastic year. We've done some great things. I know we'll continue under the leadership of Councilman Cirillo, and the residents, we're a family, we're a team. It's been an honor, something I will treasure for a long time. I hope the residents have seen the improvements that we've done, the challenges that we've overcome, and the leaps and bounds that we've made, particularly with pedestrian safety, and when you'll see the complete streets presentation, hopefully the next meeting. But before we go again, I just want to wish my council family and the administration all here, I hope you all had a great Hanukkah. I wish you the best for the merriest of Christmases and a joyous, healthy, happy New Year and a wonderful Kwanzaa season. And again, thank you very much, and good night, West Orange. It's been great.
Motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the meeting is recessed.